Good afternoon and welcome to the June 11th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. If you have pagers, cell phones, or similar devices, we would ask that you would either turn those off or silence them now. If you are not the applicant and you have come to address us on one of the cases to be heard today, sign up sheets like this one are available on the table right outside the chambers, and if you would complete one, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we'll go to approval of the May 28 minutes. No approval?
Second.
Okay, I'm not voting, I was not there. I have to do that, don't I? Okay, so the minutes are approved.
We have five requests for continuance. Item B-18, S.P.U.D. 827, to defer that to July 9. Item B-19, which is P.C. 10405, to defer to July 9. Item B-20, which is C-6708, defer to August 13. And item B-21, P.U.D. 1583, defer indefinitely. And item B-22, to strike.
Is anyone here today who came to talk to us about any of the items just read 18 through 22 on our agenda? Take a motion?
No approval of continuances as read.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes, and they're approved.
We've also received two new requests for continuance. Item B-2, for P.C. 10420, to defer that to July 9. And item B-11, S.P.U.D. 829, to defer to July 9.
Same question. Anyone come today to address us on items 2 or 11 on our agenda? Robert Pearson? Is Robert Pearson here? Do you object to a continuance today? Okay, thank you.
No. Leave the continuances as read.
Okay, we have a second to continue items 2 and 11. Cast your votes, and those are approved. Any public requests today for continuances? Hang on one second. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Mike, you're not voting?
Yes, I voted to continue.
Guys, didn't get your light that time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Can you come to the microphone so we can... Since this is televised and recorded, people want to... Give me your name and address.
The name is Paula Maggard, 15 Southwest 138th Street, Oklahoma City. I'm signed up to speak for number 5.
Yes.
They're going to ask for a vote. We're going to ask for a continuance or a deferred for two more weeks, so I didn't know whether to bring it up now, since you asked if there were any other public requests for deferral, or if I wait until you're ready to address item 5.
Perfectly good time to hear it. Your reason for asking for the continuance is?
Okay, we were here two weeks ago, and that was the first time they requested the deferred vote, to give a time for the developer to meet with some of the homeowners. Our addition backs up to this. We did meet with him the Monday following, and then addressed our concerns. He was going to be looking into it. He sent an email that they were looking for some legal information, and they didn't know for sure if they would have it in time for this meeting. He did send an email Tuesday afternoon at noon, but it went to my work address. I was not there Tuesday afternoon. I only got it yesterday. It has a red line spud, but it addresses some items in the Fair Housing Act and the HOPA for the older people over 55. I only had last night to look at it. I've dug it off of the Internet, I've got it off the Federal Register. I've got some notes, but between last night and today, there is no way we have been able to digest it. I've been able to get it to the other 10 families who showed up at the meeting with the developer, or to address it to the developer. So we would ask to just give us another two weeks to allow us to look at it and find out how it impacts our original requests.
Well, our next meeting is July 9, which is approximately four weeks. We only have one meeting this month, but it would be a four-week continuance if we grant it, just so you know.
Okay. I can't impact when you have your meetings, but we only got the information yesterday, and I don't think that's a fair time.
I understand, I was just trying to inform you.
Yeah.
Is the applicant here? Give us your name and address.
Brent Irish, 1605 Mark Circle, Moore, Oklahoma. I guess the reason for, I guess, anyway, what we removed... We're just updating a spud. The only change in the spud now is basically it defines the 55 and up age group. So before, we were taking out the 55 and up age restriction, and also adding 3 and 4 family homes, so that we could get three extra units in this gated development. And now, we've removed those things, and instead of having the... We just changed the language of what the 55 and up... It just says that it will comply with the Federal Housing Act and the Housing for Older People Act of 1995, which better defines it than something I touched on last time.
And you've already agreed to remove the 3 and 4?
Yes, that was taken out of the new spud.
Okay. So the only question, you're putting in the age limit of 55, but you just shared what the definitions of federal statutes are with regard to that? Is that...
Yeah, we're leaving the age restriction in there, but it's just defined by the Federal Housing Act, and really what that does, as I explained to them and to you guys, is it allows up to 20% of those units to be rented to people below 55.
Right, I understand.
So...
Okay, thank you.
As I said, I did pull that off the Federal Register last night, and the 20% is allowable under HOPA, but in accordance with it, that's only the minimum, that 80% have to be the 55 and up. It is allowed by public zoning, municipal zoning, or under that section, 100.305 par E, housing satisfies the requirement even if the units are occupied, et cetera.
We're getting off point here. The question is, are we going to continue this or not?
Anyway, it allows us to restrict it. When they originally did this in 2009, it was 55 and older, period. Now they want to rent to lower age.
Okay.
And they're saying because HOPA lets them do 20%, they should be allowed. We want to hold them to the original agreement, and you can restrict the whole thing.
We understand now, thank you. Commissioners?
Do respect, but she sounds pretty prepared to me. I don't know why we'd put it off.
I'm inclined to hear it today in order. Is that a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion to hear it today? Second? We have a motion and second to hear it today? Cast your... Well, we don't need to do anything, we're not continuing it, so we just hear it in order, never mind. I got off track, too. Okay.
Under the public hearing items, there are no items on the consent docket today. The first item requiring a separate vote is item C-6730, the final plot of Valencia, commercial, Section 1, located west of Pennsylvania and north of Northwest 178th Street.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, my name is Joe Covey. I'm a Lance Silverware Smith, Lawrence Baldish White. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we ask for your approval.
Commissioners, no one has signed up? No approval? We have a motion and second to approve item 1. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 2 is deferred to July 9. Item 3 is S.P.U.D. 822, to rezone 3012 North Walker Avenue from C-3, H.L., and U.C.D. to S.P.U.D. 822.
And give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kristen Mercer, and my personal address is 1801 North Elmhurst Avenue. And I'm the project representative for this application in spud. With me is owner and operator, Adam Shelton, and our property owner and partner, Muntascon. And we are hoping that you will find that the uses that we are proposing today are appropriate for the building that we are looking to rezonate.
Can you tell us exactly what you plan to do, what your operating hours will be?
We can. We've gone through different options, as this is a different kind of concept that we're trying to introduce into the neighborhood and into the city in all reality. We are looking at taking the art gallery that's been here for three and a half years and introducing a different concept, which has a variety of art form and entertainment. We'd like to introduce a beverage, a mixed beverage option into this concept that's already there, kind of getting into an art bar concept, where there's gallery and there's arts from the walls to the music, and then to the leisure as well. With that, we have specific hours of operation that would build upon that idea, not opening up completely as a bar, opening until 2:00 a.m., but restricting that down to more of the community's idea of a gallery and kind of that, as Janice said, a hybrid of application where that idea is meshing more than one concept. Right now, with working with Edgemere and the surrounding neighborhood associations, trying to really create a structure that will work for everyone and we all feel comfortable with, we have decided that the beer and wine and alcohol would be served after 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and only after 12:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. And then entertainment, we've also broken that down to, and by 11:00 p.m. on Sunday through Wednesday, and 12:00 p.m. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And again, this is not a music venue primarily, or a bar. It's an art gallery with all these concepts interacting in one spot. And so, on a weekly basis, we're not having live music every night and/or art openings every single day, but it has an open concept for those events to happen throughout the weeks and months as we book them. And with that, it gives us the opportunity to have those live music shows when we do. Normally, they happen on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. You know, that's just kind of the basis, weekly entertainment evenings. And so, we've extended that till 12:30 on Thursday for the week for that option. Not that we're going to have live music blaring every single night of the week, but when we do, it's we'd like to have that leeway to get the band set up and then shut down and out at a certain time. We've also put our last call times, when the music shuts down as well, allowing us to shut off alcohol, but allowing people to still mingle and get... Exit the building and get home prior to bars even closing in their surrounding areas.
What did you tell me the weeknight closing time would be again? I'm sorry, I missed that.
And please forgive me, as we just went over this a couple of days ago, and we've gone back and forth, and I continue to reference here, that our... As far as the closing hours, our establishment will be closed by 12:30 Sunday through Thursday, and 1:30 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. And that's extending, that's getting our last call from 1:00 on the weekends, and then again at 11... I'm sorry, 12:00 on the weekdays.
And those are art gallery closing hours?
Yes, that's what our art gallery closing hours will be. In the surrounding areas, obviously, with being in the Paseo District, or right next to Paseo District, we are, you know, coming into a community that is eclectic and trying to nurture the culture that already exists. As we do have, you know, bars and galleries, you know, surrounding us, some of the galleries aren't open until midnight, but that is what this concept is, is kind of creating a different experience where it's we're not just a bar, we're not just a gallery, we're both. And so, not staying open until bar time and staying later than gallery time. We have First Fridays and things like that. The Paseo has put on, and that is very successful, that we not only want to be a part of, but also kind of, we want to create a new, an exciting activity that isn't really implemented into the district yet, and also be a part of it as well. So galleries will be closing before us, for sure, and we will be closing before the bars.
Now, one of the things that you told me when I visited was you were going to use the kitchen in the convenience store, which is the north half of the same building as I...
Correct, and...
And how are you going to get to that? Because it's in the very northeast corner...
Right.
...of the building itself, so it's the far end of the convenience store from the common wall that you currently share. How would you do that?
Yeah, very true, and that is in our future development. Right now, we are focusing on creating the gallery space and incorporating the beverage option. We've been working with different restaurants on the Paseo as the drive as well, bringing in, having an option where they can bring in pizzas on Wednesdays, they can order from Sauced, and also having a relationship with the convenience store kitchen at this time. Until in the future, as an option, we would love to be able to build upon that idea and have more of an in-house food option available. And right now, the logistics of all that, we have not broken down as what we're able to do. But what we've played around with is the idea of bringing, using other local businesses and creating a relationship with them and an option for food that way. And we do have the kitchen available for future development, but as for now, we can do the same concept with the deli as we would do with Sauce, per se.
I think I'd be more comfortable if that was worked out now, and we knew what it was going to be, as opposed... This is just me. Actually being able to understand how it would work, what the food sales would be, how all this comes together, because just giving an essential ABC3 without more detail than I'm hearing, I'm uncomfortable with. But I'll leave that here from the rest of the commissioners. Janice, what do you think?
And when I initially met with the applicant, this idea was pitched to me as a gallery that wanted to be able to serve beer and wine. And we were just coming off our vote on the lyric, and so this idea of these hybrid uses, where, you know, something is primarily one thing, in that case, a theater, in this case, a gallery, but has the capacity or the capability of serving alcohol, was sort of open to that concept. But when I met with them, you know, I indicated that there would be some issues with that. One of those issues being our own very limited tools in dealing with alcohol service, where you're one of three things. You either serve beer and wine, or you're a restaurant that serves alcohol, or you're a bar. And if they weren't going to serve food at all, then that limited their choices to beer and wine, or a bar. And, you know, I was not then, and have not become, supportive of the idea of this place being a bar. Part of the reason, part of the difficulty here is that they, in the process of their development, they haven't been to the ABLE Commission yet. They don't know whether they'll be able to get approval for an ABC3 license there. They're within X number of feet of a school. Whether you divide and cut off the ABC3 application sort of in the middle of the building or not makes a difference there. I don't know whether the ABLE Commission will let them do that. They're willing to sort of cast their bread and see where they end up. I'm not so willing to do that in terms of zoning. If we give them an ABC3 designation, then whether this concept succeeds or not, it'll be zoned to be a bar, and I'm not entirely comfortable with that. There's a daycare center in this building, there's a school just up the street, and yes, the Red Rooster sits at the corner of 30th and Walker. It's been there forever, it's Grandfather's Inn, it's a beer bar, but it doesn't provide, in my view, any precedent or any reason to expand those kind of uses, or to up the ante to an ABC3 in this location. But in addition to that, the concept, I'll say it's developed as this has gone forward. Last week, they had a meeting at my suggestion with the surrounding neighbors to listen to their concerns and see if they could meet those. And that was the first time that I had heard this term "art bar." It had always been pitched to me very much as a gallery, and that was its principal use, that was what it wanted to be, that's what it wanted to do. The first kind of flyer that I saw that was circulated indicating that they wanted to encourage people to come by, have a drink, and watch the Thunder game, and hang out, and didn't sound so much to me like a gallery. And now, it's, at least it's, you know, come full-blown, I guess, and they've described this to me as part of the art, is like the art of making cocktails. And so, in terms of the gallery concept, you know, the alcohol itself is art, and I just am not comfortable with this location becoming an ABC3 full-blown bar. I'm just not. So, I had suggested to them that some of my concerns would be alleviated if they would reduce it to an ABC1. They were not ready to do that, or interested in doing that at this time. We don't know... This went to the H.P. Commission, but their only concern about it was whether the exterior structure of the building was going to be changed or not. And that was their sole concern, so they didn't really recommend approval in the sense of approval of the use. In fact, they specifically indicated they would not do that, or were not ruling on the appropriateness of the use. Parking, I think, is an issue at this location. Initially, the S.P.U.D. said that it would just be deemed to be sufficient as it was. They've changed that language a little bit to say they'll provide 16 spaces, but that's...
Right.
That's the parking they have. There are 16 spaces there now, so I'm not comfortable with this application. I'm not able to support it in its current form, but, you know, I would certainly be willing to hear from other members of the commission.
Well, the people that I'd like to hear from, not, I wouldn't like to hear from them, but the letters of support of this application that's included in our packet, do you think that they understood fully what they were supporting? I really have some question as to whether or not...
You know, I think, I mean, to be absolutely fair to them, what they're wanting to do is basically open a bar for people who are interested in the arts, and that's their community, and that's what they're reaching out to and wanting to develop. And I imagine that most of the signatures that you see on that supportive petition are folks that have attended those kinds of events at this location, and they're probably completely supportive of it. Not the same thing as saying that the people who live in those surrounding historic neighborhoods have struggled over the last, how many years, to, you know, keep their property values up and defend their borders. Everybody wants the Paseo to succeed.
Right.
Thrive, flourish. It's not the same thing as saying they want to see it spill over into the residential areas, and that's part of my concern with this application.
You know, but we talked about this earlier, and there's any number of restaurants or bars that invite artists to put things on the wall. You'll see it at every place you go with price tags on it. And so, you just kind of open up this application, and while I think that people thought, or think, that this is going to be an art gallery, and, you know, and it probably will be, but it doesn't seem to distinguish itself between other restaurants that have artists putting their stuff on the walls as a gallery for sale for a period of time, and then another comes in, another comes in. A full ABC3 is a bar, without any question whatsoever. You're on, what, Walker, you know, here's the convenience store, there's the Red Rooster, and then the businesses down below, and then the Edgemere people, and there's their wonderful houses, et cetera. The concern is, is that this location, on Western where it is, with a full bar contingent, is troubling. It seems to me that if the application was revised to allow beer and wine, I would be much easier in approving this application with beer and wine, even though they both are alcoholic beverages. But you don't do shots of tequila at 1:30 in the morning, looking at somebody's art thing up there and not care. And so, I kind of, that's, reduce it down. That's really what I was, you know, just do a gallery, yes. If you have food, yes. But a full-tilt, full-service bar, that's not the place for it. Someplace within Paseo, within, you know, within that district, you're out of that district. You're over there by a convenience store, and even though the Red Rooster's a bar, that's beer, you know, I mean, that's, and it's also a restaurant, and they serve food. And so, I just, I looked at this, and I thought it was just a bit too intense where it is, where it's located, but at the same time, fully supporting you guys to put it in a gallery, you guys to do something, because gallery openings have beer and wine, you know, that's consistent with what galleries do. And if you want to stay open and look at the, you know, pictures until 1:00 in the morning, I don't have any problems with that either. But I think the full bar concerned me, because it's really not any different than any restaurant that hangs artist pictures, and that's my comment. So I don't know, Janice, if...
Well, the issue for me is, it's not necessarily at all critical of the concept, it's the criticism that we have that typically, that once we've got an ABC there, it's going to stay there, regardless of whether you're there running an art bar, or somebody else is running a different sort of establishment that may not either benefit the district as a whole, or your concept, while it may be beneficial to the neighborhood, the next person there's concept may not be at all beneficial to the neighborhood. And once again, it's less of a function of what you want to do than it is the, it's there forever notion with respect of ABC, and our inability...
Sure.
...to have any later control once that's established. And that's my concern. Again, not critical of your concept, I think it's ambitious, interesting, but that part causes me pause in that particular area, just, so... And again, once again, a function of our continued criticism of how that just works in our state, for that matter.
We do have someone signed up from the neighborhood to speak, so...
Okay, well, would I have another opportunity as well?
Yes, you will. You'll have an opportunity to rebut. You will be back.
Okay, thank you.
It's been years since I've seen you, Doug.
How are you doing? It's good to see you.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Eason, 3400 Harvey Parkway, and I am the president of Edgemere Park Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association met with the gallery on two occasions. The first one was, I think, a week and a half ago or so. One of the concerns we had was the fact that there is a school nearby, and if the children walk home, and the gallery was, accepted our idea of not serving alcohol Monday through Friday until after 6:00. The liaison from our neighborhood to the school was comfortable with that, because the last child probably leaves after-school program a little before 6:00, and they were nice enough to do that. Basically, we went through five restrictions that the neighborhood wanted to see. We liked the concept, too. I think another one of our concerns was the fact that children will not be able to come into this if it's designated a bar, so we were kind of wanting them to get a neighborhood concept. But the neighborhood likes the concept, we're okay with it. The restrictions, concerns with the next use was one of ours, but we thought the 6:00 restriction that we have asked for, and the closing, too, kind of alleviated some of those concerns.
Thank you, Doug.
If I could, on these restrictions, this certainly becomes then an enforcement...
Yeah.
...notion. I'm skeptical of the ability to enforce the 6:00 serving time. I mean, I know everybody's trying to make that work, I get that, but I see some slippage. These folks could, yes, yes, yes. Again, but next guy's, he's got a restaurant use there, he just waits, starts, or starts early.
I think if you had an ABC3 certificate, that's all a person needs, without the details. That's...
Well, if we do it in the spud, you can impose the restrictions.
That's going to be up to ABLE to enforce.
No.
Right?
If you condition the spud, they would, and they got an ABC3 from the state, the restrictions in the spud as to hours of operation or any other conduct agreed to between the applicant and the city would stand.
But the city would be responsible.
City would have to enforce those, yes.
Okay, all right, that's fair.
Yeah, I'm sorry, your turn.
Well, and that's one of the reasons that we felt confident moving forward with the mixed beverage option, is by limiting these hours. We would even be flexible on that level to do it more so. That's, I think that's why the Edgemere was more comfortable. We don't, our sole purpose is to be in addition to the community and the culture that's there. We want everyone to feel comfortable, and obviously, we don't want to be serving alcohol with kids running in and out of the door either. So this was, this was a very easy compromise for us, and on that level. But, I mean, as you stated earlier, it's hard to see how this is any different than any other bar with art on the walls, and that's our main focus. And... And I think for me, at this point, really explaining what we're wanting to do and what I'm hearing is that the issue is more about the long-term zoning, and I completely understand your position on that. And we were hoping to implement certain restrictions within this spud that would carry on, you know, long-term as well, that would create an environment that someone else couldn't come in and just have a full-blown bar, where these hours of operation creates a different atmosphere, and it really embraces and structures that idea to where, well, you can only serve from this time to this time, and you've got to close your doors before this time. So anyone that would want to come in with those hours, with those restrictions involved in this spud, we were hoping that that would justify the structure enough to where you would be inviting someone else in with this kind of concept and/or a completely different use that would be also listed. We do understand that concern as far as the zoning, and truly didn't grasp that until our last meeting as far as why that would be an issue. And so we want to work with all of you and, you know, the city as a whole to make sure that we, you know, we rezone this appropriately and for us and for the city. So what we'd like to do is obviously move forward with that mixed beverage option for the reason only of creating a different concept with drinks alone, and that being, where you have an idea of it's not just coming in and shooting a shot of tequila, but it's where you have crafted artful cocktails that are promoted and things like that. So I want to sit here and tell you about our concept all day long. I'm passionate about it, I'm excited about it, and I think that the long-term use is what your concerns are. If everyone has that concern across the board, I would like to hear that so we can discuss what other options are. We do want to move forward with this, and so if everyone is adamant that mixed beverage does not be allowed, or alcohol, or the C3 not be permitted, then before you guys vote on anything, we'd like to discuss that as well, if there's anything that we need to adjust.
Well, my final thought, I guess, and, you know, thank you for touring, giving me a tour today and so forth, and letting me look through the entire building. I think you're a little premature in your application, not the concept that this might work, but it's been evolving as discussions have been had over the last several weeks or a month with Janice, for example. I'd be more comfortable with a business plan that could tell me exactly where this is going, how you manage food. I mean, Red Rooster, for example, serves beer. They also have one of the best cheeseburgers in town if you can stand the smoke inside the restaurant.
No doubt.
But, I mean, it is a restaurant that serves beer. And, you know, if you're going to have food service and that's going to blend in, I just really want to know how all this is going to work together, and it still sounds amorphous to me, not opposed potentially to the concept executed well, and I think that's what your intent is, but I think maybe a month or two's continuance to work some of those details out. Janice is happy to talk to you, I'm happy to talk to you, to try and get us to a point where at least I would be comfortable.
I understand that. I would propose today that we think about what we have solidified as far as our plan is concerned. The food option is in our future. That is something that we will not be able to address until later time. The space that we'd like to incorporate into that option, and it's all outside of our actual intent in our direct use, which is to have an art gallery with live music, events that bring in the community, that celebrate art, and then to be able to have a beverage option. That was our original statement, and we would love to move forward with that option as of now. We have done a couple of continuances at this point, and we're all excited to work towards this concept alone. And then in the future, as we were speaking about outside, the possibility of incorporating food, and if we ever wanted to redevelop a concept with the mixed beverage at that point, or just food alone, we'll need to introduce at that time when we are prepared. But I know that our first and initial focus is to move forward with the art gallery as the focus with, it being a venue where, and a spot where people can come with leisure as well, where we talked about being able to sit and have a glass of wine and watch the Thunder game after work. That is our first and primary focus for today in moving forward, and if we could shift on to that and concept, and then if you're willing to allow us to readdress that in a later time, even if a year later from now, our first focus is to move forward with our initial concept. And I don't know how you feel about that, but we would be willing to take the beer and wine option without a problem, as we were from the beginning.
Let me make a comment about, I mean, I appreciate your presentation. It was very complete, concise, and informative, and with that, and particularly with the statement of the Edgemere Park chairman of the Neighborhood Association, a very, really very nice neighborhood, and those are the stakeholders that really are most concerned about this with the revisions you did with the SPD restrictions on when you would serve alcohol and when this would all happen, and satisfaction of what their demands were. I also appreciate it. And also, by putting in the spud hours of operation and when you're going to do certain things, when you can't do certain things. Remember, the bar that's on 23rd Street with the big, you know, platform at the top with speakers going down to Estes Park, they would not agree to any hours of operation or anything, and we denied it 9 to 1, 9 to 0, I think it was. Council approved it 9 to 0 because they wanted business. I have no doubt that this will be approved by, you know, no matter what we do. But, oh, wait a minute. What? Oh, no. At any rate, so you're going to come back, is that right?
We would like to leave here today with an approval, whether it be a C3 or if that is not a possibility, to discuss the option of the C1. Maybe C1. Absolutely.
You know, I had indicated to them before the meeting today that many of my concerns would be alleviated if they would reduce the application to an ABC1, and I think I would be able to support that. It doesn't answer all of my concerns, frankly, the hours of operation, even as amended, sound more like a bar to me than an art gallery, but I think that will take care of itself as long as the alcohol sales are restricted. And so if they are willing to amend the application down to an ABC1 with the other adjustments that they have already submitted to the SPD, I think I could support that application.
It really won't be an ABC1, it will be limiting this application to service of beer and wine.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
And then you can always come back.
Will you accept that result?
Yes, we will. Absolutely, yes, and we appreciate your consideration on that.
So I'll move.
So we have a motion in a second to approve item three, conditioning it to an ABC1 and incorporating the other conditions of the spud, including the hours of operation...
Wait, 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 no, no, no.
Tell us again what we're doing.
We're approving this application, limiting it to beer and wine.
Tell us again what we're doing, Jay Jay.
ABC1.
Well, to beer and wine sales only.
Beer and wine without food is a three, like a beer tavern is a three.
Oh, okay, right. My apologies. Okay, limiting it to beer and wine and hours of operation as presented today.
Is that right? Okay, the hours of operation as presented?
As presented, correct.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve item three as conditioned. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And it's approved.
Thank you very much.
And before they depart, I do want to compliment them. They have been very cooperative to work with, very forthcoming. As their plans have changed, you know, it's been a little bit difficult to pin down, but not due to any, you know, deceit or deception on their part. They met with the neighborhood when I suggested they do that, so they've done a good job.
Very much.
So, to be clear, what we're incorporating are these conditions.
Yes.
Yes, as it stands, yes.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item four is SPD 824 to rezone 501 West Memorial Road from C3 to SPD 824.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Josh Edge. I work with Dynamic Engineering. Address is 1301 Central Expressway. I am here representing the developer on this case to rezone this property for the purposes of developing an auto dealership.
Well, and I see you've made a number of changes since our last visit.
Yes, sir.
I have one thought, and has to do with the fencing to the north. I think that needs to be an eight-foot and not a six-foot fence, and I think it needs to be something more substantial than a stockade fence. You're going to have a car dealership abutting a residence, residential neighborhood.
Okay.
So we need some more of an architectural fence than this suggests.
Concrete panel fence, is that what you're speaking to?
Yeah, something like that, that doesn't just look like my backyard fence, which will fall over in five years.
Sure. May I just suggest one thing? With the use of a six-foot fence as we have it proposed, we're also going to be putting landscaping along that side. If you look at the elevation as this building will sit in comparison to where the residential subdivision sits, our building is going to be depressed. It's going to be at lower grade than what the residential subdivision is. So the site visibility into ours will be less than by using... If we still agree that an eight-foot fence is required, we're happy to do that. I just want to make sure that you got, that all the commissioners understood where we stood from an elevation standpoint.
And where will you put the landscaping you're describing?
The landscaping will be right up adjacent to the fencing.
On your side of the fence?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
No one signed up? Commissioners, any other discussion?
Chairman, I think we've worked really hard. They've made a lot of concessions to get us where we are to this point. If they are willing to agree to the eight-foot fence, and he said he would, then that wouldn't be a problem.
No, sir, we can agree to an eight...
Are there any concerns with the landscaping? If not, I'll move for adoption.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second to approve item four, conditioned with the changes to the fence to eight feet and the different material. Cast your votes. It's approved, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item five is SPD 823 to rezone 13801 South Santa Fe Avenue from SPD 501 to SPD 823.
Brent Irish, 1605 Mark Circle, Moore, Oklahoma.
Well, we heard part of this a little bit earlier, but let's go through it again for us, please.
All right, we were acquiring this property. It's been over 80% vacant since the tornado and two years ago. It's duplexes. The current changes are, our original requested changes were triplex, quadplex, and removal of the age restriction. What you have as of today is we got rid of the triplex, quadplex, and we define the age restriction. It's more limited in some ways, and it's less limiting in others, but it accommodates people that are under the age of 55, up to 20% on that. And here's some new information I got today, is that the bank has to get another appraisal because we're having an age restriction. We never expected this age restriction to have to, we never expected any opposition to it. And after meeting, the reason that's significant is it, they expect the appraised value to drop significantly. I mean, a $100,000 drop for, we're a leveraged developer, so when we want to put $300,000 into a clubhouse and storm shelter and improve the property that has not been maintained at all for in excess of three years, and develop it as quickly as possible, so that negatively affects our ability to make this as nice as we can make it. We, after meeting with the residents, the neighbors, we found out that, I mean, I felt, because of the things they brought up, that were not, a lot of them not related to our changes, and a lot of demands that we didn't think were reasonable, we took that, and that's why I have the changes in the spud today. We tried to do everything we possibly could to be good neighbors and make them happy. After seeing that, I mean, my suspicion was that that wasn't their real concern because they're really upset about having multifamily next to them. They felt that their property values are lower because they have multifamily next to them. I mean, I completely disagree with that, especially if we do what we want to do. We want to raise the rents over here, we want to make things really nice. It's a gated, there's high demand for something like this in Moore, in Oklahoma City. I mean, it's on the border of 19th Street and Moore, it's a very high-traffic area. Older folks, I think, are, I mean, that's, that Santa Fe is becoming a very, very busy street. You've got Walmart going just to the north, the neighborhood market, which is starting construction very soon. This, and a mile north, you have another 55 and up development that's building a bunch of more units. Because of the information that, the fact that this age restriction is going to adversely affect our ability to move quickly and to do things at the quality and the level we want to do, I would actually like to strike that, our attempt, that age restriction altogether, that I, the defined age restriction that I put in, put back in to try to appease the neighbors, and I'm not doing that in spite of them. I believe it will actually help their, they may not see it now, but it will help the end goal of their property values. I don't want their property values to increase, that does not, that does not help me. I want to make this as nice as possible, and, I mean, even if, it could be $100,000 to $200,000 drop in my appraised value, that's leveraged, that's $500,000 to $1 million that I cannot put into the property. So I don't know if you can do that on the fly and strike a sentence out of what you're going to vote on, but if, I'd like your feedback, and I think this, I will also say that I, on camera, on record, that I, we still want to do a 55 and up development there, but it doesn't have to be in the spud for us to do that.
It does for us to enforce it.
Okay, well, I'll just add that it's not necessarily, there's a waiting list of, I say waiting list, the realtor that they have leasing the units out now has had 20 to 30 people that would have moved into these that are all below 55, and so far, she's been able to get four leased.
Well, let's hear from Mrs. Baggart, and we'll kind of shorten this a bit since we've heard some of it already. Focus on the 55...
Name again?
Yeah, please.
55. I would dispute the rental, there are already rentals, they've been rentals since 2009, so the fact that they're going to continue to be rentals isn't the issue. Our issue was when they changed it and said they wanted to completely remove the 55 and up, which is what we had agreed to in 2009. We had worked with the existing developer, that that was his idea, and we worked with him, and that was the agreement. And then this new spud came in, and they wanted to remove it completely. When we had our meeting on June 1st, we mentioned that that was our first preference, but if we couldn't have that, could they at least limit the number? And they had told us that's what they were going to look at. Then when we received this, we call it the red line, he sent it by email, as I mentioned, around noon on Tuesday, but I didn't get it till yesterday. Yes, so we lost about half a day. It said, it removed the age per se, but just said it would apply with HOPA, HOPA, however they pronounce the acronym, for the Implementation of Housing for Other, for Older Persons Act. And so I thank goodness for Google, found that online last night, started digging through it, and that 80/20, yes, that's what the legislation says, but all it means is that 80% is the minimum. There are other parts of this, and if need be, I'll cite them for you, that state you can restrict those other 20% as much as you want. There is absolutely, you can restrict it to, two units can be under. It already allows a maintenance person, which is one of the things he had brought up, what if they have somebody who wants to live there, manage maintenance? HOPA already allows that. We don't have a problem with that. And then he comes up here and suddenly says, now we want to remove it altogether. We're strongly against removing the age restriction. It was there when they bought it. It's not like it got blindsided on them. I'm sorry if somehow they didn't understand that our neighborhood fought this the first time and that we would be here fighting it again. it again. I can't help that. But we strongly do not want that age restriction lifted.
Well, if I'm understanding where we are now, it's back to two thousand and nine in the sense that three and four family residential is taken out.
Was removed, yes.
And the only change is that possibly up to twenty percent of the units could be for people younger than age fifty-five. Is that correct?
Yes. And when he mentioned the Walmart, which was something else that we weren't happy with, but it's there in all truth. If you're fifty-five and above, the fact that you can scoop down what will eventually be sidewalks, just a couple of blocks to get to groceries and back should be a plus eventually.
Okay, thank you.
I have a historical question. So, when this was approved, was it approved for three and four limited to fifty-five?
No.
It was duplex only, limited to a hundred percent fifty-five?
Single-family or two-family and fifty-five and above.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up, Commissioners?
Well, I'm, you know, inclined to hold the developer to the original deal. I just, I get that things happen like tornadoes and, you know, things change, and it is perhaps unfortunate that their due diligence did not reveal to them that there was this history. But, you know, the people that originally participated in the process of zoning of this property are very invested in its terms, and that seems only fair to me. So, I would not be inclined to change or alter those terms. That it might make it more difficult to obtain financing, that's true for everybody about everything nowadays, but...
Question for Dan. The prior spud, it said the duplex only, et cetera, and with the negotiations with the neighborhood, and it said we want to do this for fifty-five and older people. Would that anticipate that that statement encompassed the Housing for Old Persons Act?
I don't know. I have to look it up, Bob.
You see what I'm saying, is that by just saying fifty-five and older, would that have incorporated what the legal federal requirements are for fifty-five and over, which would be, twenty percent of that could be less? That's what I don't know. I really don't know if you even thought about it, or if the prior guys thought about it.
Asked an attorney about that same question, and said that that would be arguable either way. It would be better to have clarification, if you can get it, but...
I mean, it's just a thought.
Well, if as the act, if as the opponent indicated, the act would allow you to tighten those restrictions anyway, even if it did incorporate it, it doesn't necessarily settle that question of whether it would permit the twenty percent variable. Even if he said that the act did apply, it might apply in this case, still require it to be fifty-five and above for the whole development.
Out of that, this is out of the Federal Register, it says, they can set whatever requirements they wish as long as at least eighty percent of the occupied units are occupied by one person, fifty-five, da-da-da-da-da.
That's your answer.
So, it can be eighty-five, ninety, that's-
Right.
You can-
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, a motion?
I think before we get to that point, Brent, do you want this to, you want to visit about this anymore? Give it, it'd be a month, or do you want this to, do you want us to vote on this and move this forward, or?
You're too short. You might wait a minute. Just saying. You got a split panel here. You can see that. Yeah. So...
Yeah. What? To the microphone, and then we need to get a decision here.
Okay. The revised spud that they sent us Tuesday, so I got it yesterday, it said it would still go, it would apply with HOPA. And then twenty-four hours later, he's saying he wants it out completely. So, I was going to ask, what's the change within the last twenty-four to thirty-six hours?
We're voting on it with the fifty-five age limit in it. Pardon? All right. Motion.
Not entirely sure exactly where we stand. Is the application as it stands?
The application is deleting the three and four family residential and retaining the age restriction of fifty-five.
A hundred percent retention of the age restriction?
He's got, he's got it the federal-
Wait, 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 wait.
No, I thought, I thought he was saying he wanted to delete that.
I think you're backwards on that, John. I think what he wants to do, if I could, sir, is remove the fifty-five age restriction, a hundred percent.
Entirely.
Entirely.
No. Want to leave it as it is most recently distributed, which is, let's see, I forgot the exact language. It's, yes, in accordance with the following, the federal-
We, nobody, we weren't talking to you, ma'am. Please, I'm sorry. Would you state what your ask is, please?
All right. Asking that it is approved with the clarification of the fifty-five and up in accordance with the Housing for Older Peoples Act of nineteen ninety-five, which does allow the twenty percent.
And deleting the three and four family residential?
Yes, that has already been deleted.
I think rather than state it that way, it would be more precise to say that he's asking for a twenty percent variation of the fifty-five and older requirement.
Okay.
And that I will move to disapprove.
I'm ready. With, with that, does he really need to ask for a variance if the law requires or permits a twenty percent?
His zoning requires that a hundred percent of the units be for fifty-five and older. So, what he's asking for is to change that requirement.
It's not a variance. He's now referring to a federal statute addressing fifty-five and older residential.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I have a question. Could you, could you come here a minute? How many units, how many units are you going to build on this, for this project?
There's, there's fourteen existing, and there's twenty-eight more to be built.
There's, so total, how many units?
It'd be thirty-eight total.
Okay, thirty-eight, and then twenty percent of thirty-eight-
Please.
Is seven point six.
Seven point nine. Eight. It's eight units.
You've got thirty-one, fifty-five and over, and seven that-
Eight.
That are going to be in a place that they don't want to be because there's just old people around them, or something like that.
Is there a second? Is all I want to know.
Again, the fifty-five and up development to the mile north is building more units, and they have a waiting list of people that are between the age of fifty and fifty-four. That's why this is important.
Oh, yeah.
Question. Is there a second?
Second. Janice's motion was to deny the application. She's opposed a motion to deny the application.
Okay, this is a motion to deny the application, and it's been seconded. Cast your votes. It is, that denial does not pass. We'll need a motion to approve it. Anyone want to make that motion?
I am not afraid. I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item five as discussed. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item six is P U D fifteen eighty-four to rezone nine thousand Broadway Extension from R one, C four, I one, and I two to P U D fifteen eighty-four.
Do you have a brief presentation, Dennis?
Very brief. Dennis Box and Tim Johnson. I want this commission to know that we are both covered under HOPA. And the presentation you're going to see, we're not going to back up on, and we're going to present as applied for. We have no art in making cocktails. What we want to do is zone property.
Motion to deny.
The property in question is owned by American Fidelity. It's eighty-six acres. The developer is Randy Hogan. This is a project that, if you all are familiar with the old old Pubco Building, American Fidelity now has their corporate offices at that location. There are two spring-fed ponds that are to the south of that location. They also have walking trails. Randy Hogan, as the developer, has come up with some design ideas, and Tim's going to show you those in a few minutes, but the design will incorporate the use of the water. This will have at least one, maybe two hotels. We're going to have five restaurant pad sites, and the restaurant developer is one of the restaurant developers in East Wharf, which is a project that Mr. Hogan developed. And there's a family, multifamily element to it in addition to the hotel, restaurants, commercial. The project, if you look at what Mr. Hogan has done, both on East Wharf and the Lower Bricktown area, I think is exciting for this city. This is just south of Britton, and we have provided for a multitude of uses, and we think the water will provide a benefit not only for the American Fidelity operations, but all of Oklahoma City as you drive up and down Broadway Extension. The staff recommends approval. Now, this application, we can agree to all the T E's except for the T E's that deal with signs. We have three signs that we're proposing that will be twenty feet up on the north edge. The, there'll be two thirty-foot signs that will be south of the ponds, and those will be monument-style signs. And then we have the ability to have two EMD signs throughout the project. And remember, this is eighty-six acres. You'll have a number of buildings. All those buildings would be limited to an eight-foot monument ground sign. So, as we look at the project, the, from the north edge to the south edge has thirty-two hundred feet. So, this is a large project. We expect some major owners and tenants within this property, and so, obviously, we have tried to minimize our signs. We have no pole signs. There's one billboard that exists on the property. We will not allow any additional billboards. That billboard exists, and so, they're, have a long-term lease, and there's nothing we can do about that. We're here to answer any questions, but before we do, I'd like to have Mr. Johnson go ahead and show you a short PowerPoint presentation, and this will show you some of our ideas and concepts that are taken from other parts of the country, Austin, Texas, and other places, about what we intend on incorporating on this property.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of applicants. We spent, we had four-hour charade on this project yesterday, and this is kind of a result of that charade. You can just roll through these lands if you don't mind. So, this is a style of office building that you would see out there, and multifamily and specialty retail. You can see the concepts. The multifamily is intended to be high-density, four to five stories wrapped product, perhaps. The fast-tracked office is a tilt-up product, but it's a very attractive product. And then the specialty retail will include a couple of national anchors that have been wanting to come onto the site, as well as the local restaurants that Randy, that Dennis had mentioned. This is a similar project in Austin, and we can just go quickly. This is like an event menu, venue that allowed restaurants around a music venue, which we're proposing as part of this project. Putting the music venue out into the lake itself and having the restaurants focus on to that. Another view of the same thing. This is, would be what it would be like on the grass area next to the lake, looking back towards the restaurant venues. Another project is Grandscape. Again, we're looking at these as, for typology of what we wanted to have in this project. So, this is another example of, again, the use of the water, not the high-rise hotels in the back, but the use of the water, the restaurants, and the other event venues. Here's a close-up of that. And then, kind of a water's edge feel. We want to have the ability to take advantage of these natural resources there. You don't have these around town very often, and so, this is, American Fidelity is very insistent on us really taking advantage of the water. Again, with the seating outside. This is one picture of a multifamily concept of the higher density. And then this would be similar, this is a local restaurant in Texas, but that would be similar to one of our local restaurants. And then the fast-tracked office again. I think that might be it. Yeah. So, it gives you a feel of the kind of texture that they're looking for and the density that we're looking for on the site.
Tim, I don't see anything here that looks like a hotel.
Yeah, we, they have talked to a hotel operator who's very interested in the site. He wants to do two hotels, but I can't tell you who that is yet. But there'll be probably six to seven stories, probably a hundred and ten to thirty rooms per hotel, for a total of two hundred and thirty units, two hundred and sixty units.
Do we show where they'll be located?
More than likely.
And what's that southern boundary, Ninety What Street? I can't read it on my-
This is, this is actually just north of Eighty-Second Street.
Okay. I couldn't read it on my report.
And we do, Dennis did mention, but we've been working very closely with the property owner to the south as well, and the architects have met and shared different concepts. And we do have this grid planned to work with the grid that they're proposing south. It's very important that they want the connection down to Wilshire, as well as the property to the south wants the connection north.
Janice, I think your question's a good one, and just like all the other pods, we will come in with a site plan when they, you know, as each phase of the development occurs.
On that Austin property and that Dallas property, could you, I didn't, I didn't see the signs in those. I must have overlooked. Now, I see it in the-
There's a big old sign.
I see the Grandscape sign, which I think is quite tasteful, actually.
That's what we're going to have, is tasteful signs.
But I didn't see a lot of others. So, maybe I, like I said, perhaps I overlooked those in that illustration.
They don't have Broadway Extension in Texas.
Well, that Grandscape's on the, on the tollway, the Sam Rebering Tollway, one of the busiest stretches of road in southwest part of the United States, right there. SRT. I saw it on the earlier, I was just down there the other day. It's a racetrack.
That's why we, we limited ours to three large signs. Keep in mind, we don't have any pole signs. We just have the twenty-foot and two thirty-foot signs.
And where will they go?
The twenty-foot sign will go up here, and the two thirty-foot signs will be south of the ponds.
And that's close, doesn't it? I mean, you're two big, pretty south, you're going down, you know, aren't you?
Some.
Now, what's the Benham sign look like? Isn't that Benham across the street, or what's the, to the north?
North across Britton.
Yeah.
Is the Benham Building.
Benham Building.
Yeah. Honestly, I can't tell you. They have a very large, low sign.
Monument sign. I thought they had a large-
Monument. It's much wider than it is tall.
Right. I guess the point, my consideration about signage in this area is there's not a lot that I see along that portion of Broadway Extension. Now, admittedly, south of that area, there's a substantial amount of signage. There's no, no question about that. But along that particular stretch of road from halfway between Wilshire and going north up all the way to Heffernan, it seems, there's not just a lot of signage there. So, I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm not saying you've got a lot of signage, but I'm not sure that there's a need for the signs. sure that there's a need for the signs.
And the need ends up being if a major property owner comes in, wants to buy a pad site, and they want to have their main structure there, they're going to want identification. We've got 86 acres, we've got 3,200 feet, and we're only asking for two south of the lake. So the two should identify the project and then identify, you know, that major tenant.
You're not suggesting those additional users would want more signs along Broadway Extension, are you?
No. What we anticipate is that those large monument signs will have the different tenants on them. That's what we're anticipating.
Dennis, my concern is with the application encompasses the sign issue, but it also, kind of when I read it, and every single thing that you've asked for, I mean, you know, it says, "We're going to come back to the planning commission for a site plan." There's no development plan at all, other than pretty pictures of Austin developments and some boxes that you draw, and we're going to do something. With that, even the traffic people have no clue what to say about the density of this, what traffic's going to have, how, there's nobody that has an idea yet what's going to happen. I like the pictures, but this has nothing to do with what reality is. I would have preferred to have seen some sort of conscious planned development, where you do have places, just like the north of Quail Springs Mall that we worked on, where things go, how things are moved, you know, what happens here. And a comprehensive development plan was created, out of which a site plan would come if that ever came about. What you've described here with this application is, is that the site plan can be anything you want it to be without regard to anything we've heard today. There's not, there's no, you know, here's a hotel there, there's something here, et cetera, but there's no development plan, so I don't have any idea how ingress egress is, how this affects property owners to the south or to the east, what kind of traffic there is. And further, if you're going to, and you also say, we can come back for the signs. You know, we'll have approval of the signs. By this application, we're approving a 20-30-foot signs and a 20-foot sign, when in fact you might get away with a 15-foot sign. You might do that, you know. So height restrictions, you know, EMD level three, along Broadway Extension, this is an appearance corridor. There's nothing in the application that says, "I've looked at the appearance corridor guidelines, and this is what we will do to comply." There's nothing in here. It's a, it's an absolute blank, blackboard application with a lot of uses, everything you can think of, including the helicopter pad. Well, I would like to see what we've been trying to get to in this commission, at least a reasonable concept of what it is you're going to do. And then we can agree on building materials. You can put every, you know, piece of aluminum or steel, whatever, you know, but we come back with a site plan. And I believe that when you come back with a site plan, based upon what you've drawn and what you've asked for, is that the planning department will have to say that the site plan complies with what you said in the application, which was, you said, "Nothing, other than I can use 10 types of materials, I can have the 30-foot sign." You know, they will say, "Well, that complies because those are materials, no matter what it is." So this is my objection. I think that this is a premature application. I absolutely do not disagree with what the concept is, development of that part of the world for Gaylord's, you know, where American Fidelity is. No objection whatsoever to that, but I think it's premature, that it's an idea with a lot of, you know, pictures of Austin developments, and so this is what we're going to do, when in fact, the site plan, at the site plan time, will not even resemble anything you said today. And I'd like to see, you know, rather than height the signs, let's see what the height signs are and what you need with the elevation off of the Broadway Extension. As I recall, going up that way, it's higher up there. You know, the elevation, rather than down in a ditch, it's higher. So a 30-foot sign would be similar to the automobile signs just outside of Edmond when you go on up, and they're about 50 feet taller or longer. I mean, we had the Hummer sign, remember that? We had that, you know, scrunched down. And this may not need a 30-foot sign to do what it is that the prospective tenants would require. EMD level three? No. I wouldn't agree to that at all.
Other than that, do you like it?
Yeah, I do.
Dennis, the exhibits that we've got in our staff report don't match what you've got standing there, for one thing. And so I don't know what we're looking at. Would you make this PowerPoint an attachment as a suggestion of what you anticipate doing so we have some idea of what we're going to be looking at? So when you come in with something, if it's just like way out in left field, we'll say, come back and say, "Well, but it's not what you told us you wanted to do."
We'd be more than comfortable. You know, one of the things I think you've got to recognize is that the owner of the building has a high rise that their entire corporation is going to have their employees in. They own the property. They have a developer that are going to make sure develops this property that will enhance the major investment that they have in not only the building, but their property. So, you know, you have a known quantity in regard to the comments that Commissioner Bright made. Well, you know, the whole process of the PUD, there are some sites where you know exactly what you're going to do and exactly what it's going to look like. Others, you have a PUD that deals with, okay, are the uses appropriate? Are the limitations on signs appropriate? Are the building materials appropriate? All of those standards are within this PUD, and that's why you all came up with a two-step process to do site plan approval subsequent to that. At that time, you'll see how the streets lay out, you'll see where the buildings are, you'll see the focus of the lakes, and so we don't think it's premature, and we'd like to proceed.
What's your timeline, Dennis?
It's anticipated that you'll see groundbreaking within 12 months.
I'm sorry, Tim. What did you say?
Groundbreaking within 12 months.
This will be the headquarters property, is that correct?
Well, to the...
To the north.
To the north. Yeah, their headquarters is right here. They own all this property. They've gotten Randy Hogan, who's been very successful in developments that have been not only good for Oklahoma City, but good for the surrounding properties, East Wharf and Lower Bricktown, to come in, and he's going to be the developer on this property. They will still have walking trails, they're still going to have, you know, the ponds. And so, you know, from their standpoint, this is an important component to the new building that they've just moved into.
Most of us didn't even know the lake existed because of, when you're passing down Broadway Extension, I know that there's a wall that will keep you from seeing a portion of that property, along with, I think, the elevation of the land or something that kind of blocks...
When Opubco developed that, they created that as almost like a private park, and so there's a huge berm at the Broadway Extension east side, along with these very tall cedars. Those are going to go away. We're going to open the view up so that the public can share in the view of those parks, ponds, as well as the future development that's going in there. And one thing to add to what Dennis had to say is that, as with many of the corporations that have stayed in Oklahoma City, American Fidelity is moving all their employees to this location. They're still working on the building, so they still have quite a few at 2,000 North Classic. But what they're trying to do is create a campus that will attract the millennials. Everybody's looking for those 30-something-year-old employees, because like this corporation's been around for years and years, and their retirement level is very high. They're trying to get people in and get them attracted to where they can live, work, and play, right, in the, you know, within a half a mile. So that's their goal.
Well, I'm comfortable with what you're proposing to do, incorporating the conceptual notions that you did in the PowerPoint to just give us some idea of where you think you want to go. Sign heights don't bother me. The EMDs do at this point. There's not any sign competition along there, and I'd certainly like to reserve that for a future time, rather than approving it today, the EMD portion.
Well, I'd like to add height as well, because of the elevation that's up, a 30-foot sign.
Okay.
We've got two M D signs proposed in this PUD, and so we'd be agreeable to let you decide if they're appropriate at the site plan approval. The other signs, we think are at the appropriate height, 20.
The height's not a problem with me at all. I think that's fine. I just don't want to carte blanche approve EMDs now.
And we're okay with EMDs at the site plan approval? You all have the right...
We'll discuss them at that point.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
So the signs are as stated in the request, deleting EMD and the signs as in the application, right?
We wouldn't delete EMD. We would not be granted permission from EMD, but we can come to the site plan process and ask for.
Right. All right. I understand.
Motion? No one signed up?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of the application, removing signage for later date.
The EMD portion?
EMD portion of the signs for later date.
And incorporating the PowerPoint as examples of what they're proposing to do?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the motion. We have a second. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your vote.
Thank you, Dennis, for working with us.
Item seven is ABC 835 for an ABC 2 overlay for the NC and UD districts, located at 500 Northwest 28th Street.
Jeremy Fouracre, 1232 Davenport Drive.
Okay. We're on item seven first, which is the Walker Street site.
Yes, sir.
Tell us what you propose.
We have just a mixed-use development. We have a coffee shop and a restaurant on the ground floor. Coffee shop's approximately 2,000 feet with a small outdoor patio space. The restaurant is approximately 3,600 square feet with a larger 1,200-square-foot outdoor patio space. And then it's going to have a second floor, which is going to be primarily executive offices.
So you really need ABC 2 for the 3,600 feet and the patio and not...
We're also asking for the coffee shop.
Why?
Coffee shop's going to also serve pastries, but they'll also serve beer and wine and liquor that would go in coffee, but also serve food along with that, with breakfast. They'll stay open early, be open five or six in the morning, and then stay open later as well.
My Brandy Coffee would open my eyes early in the morning.
Same type of concept that Starbucks and some of the other coffee shops are moving to as well.
Starbucks on...
You have your own parking at this location, don't you?
We did. Parking's not required in the district, but we included, I believe, 24 spaces in this development.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
Well, I'll tell you, I have, I had, I should say, I guess, a little concern about this application, and it just has to do with, you know, mass, the number of restaurants, and especially those that serve alcohol in the area, and the limited parking, and the fact that this is one of those places where there's not any more parking, so we're just saying it's enough, like as it is. It's, you know, it's a concern, and the sort of inevitable impact on surrounding, the surrounding area is a concern for me. But I was told by staff that they'd really rather not see this into an S PUD, because it's complicated enough down there, the zoning is. So if there's not anybody else who's here today who wants to speak on this matter, I'm...
Nobody signed up?
I'll move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Number eight, you're still up.
Jeremy Fouracre, 1232 Davenport.
Now we're over on Dewey, I think, are we not?
Yes, Dewey. We're at Dewey and 28th Street. This is a more, it's commercial retail development. There's two buildings included in this development. The first building fronts Dewey and kind of angles down in towards the Paseo for better visibility. Have smaller suites located in this building. The ground floor has five 1,000-square-foot bays, has a second floor element as well with outdoor patio space for the second floor. There's two 1,200-square-foot bays on the second floor, and then it has a back building that's also located on the property, which will be primarily for studio and small commercial space. And they can be as small as 360 feet or so. The ABC 2 that we're asking for on this development is for the south side, which is a, going to be a deli and breakfast location. And they also intend to have what they're calling pop-up dinners, so weekend, busier time for dinners, kind of special event-type dinners and that type of thing. It also has a little outdoor patio space connected to that space. And the second floor will be more of a traditional-style restaurant on the second floor. And that's the 1,200-square-foot space, and the first level's the 1,000 with a little outdoor patio space.
Is the 1,200 square feet above the 1,000 square feet, is that just one operation, one...
No. The ground floor will be gallery and retail.
That'll be the deli and so forth, right?
The deli's on the south side, and it's only on a single, it's a single-level concept over there.
Okay.
It's just one level.
And so that's where you want the ABC 2?
Yes. And there's two, there's two places on there for the ABC 2. One for the deli, pop-up restaurant, and the second one would be for the restaurant on the second floor. So there's a first-floor location and a second-floor location.
Both on the south end?
No.
No?
The north end is the, is on the second story, on the north end, which is 1,200 square feet with the outdoor patio space. That would be the restaurant. And then the one on the south end will be a deli, breakfast restaurant.
Okay, so on each end of the building, you want an ABC 2 for...
For two different businesses, correct.
And the one on the north side will be on the second floor, second level.
Correct.
And the one on the south end will be ground level.
Correct.
Okay. We understand, I think. No one has signed up. Commissioner Dennis want to weigh in?
I have, I have sort of the same concerns about this, maybe even a little heightened here because of the, you know, we're directly across the street, across 28th Street from residential property. I'm frankly amazed that there's not someone here in opposition, but, you know, I think maybe the size of these units alone will limit whatever impact they might have. I've been by to look at this several times since I got my packet. I don't know how you're going to fit all this stuff on that.
It's tight.
It also has, it also has parking, doesn't it?
It does.
So I, you know...
We're squeezing every bit out of it we can.
And you're going to lose those trees that are there, which is unfortunate.
That's true.
Because they're quite mature. But nonetheless, having said all that, if there's not anybody else who wants to be heard on this matter, I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine is S PUD 826 to rezone 700 Southwest 29th from R2, O2, and I1 to S PUD 826.
I'm Ryan Eschelman with GSB Architects on behalf of the applicant First Fidelity Bank. I'm also joined by Lee Simcox, the president of First Fidelity.
The man behind the mask there, since I can't see Lee anymore?
And we can, we can use these, we've got the same thing on the screen as well, so we can...
so we can remove these if they're cumbersome. The, the bank asked us to look at redevelopment of a property that they own at Southwest Twenty-Ninth and Chertel, where they have an existing bank operation. You can see here, they're on the southwest corner. The bank property includes a building, essentially curb-to-curb asphalt paving and a pole-mounted sign on the corner. The proposed redevelopment would be in alignment with the images that you see here. The bank is, is replacing some facilities around the metro. What you see on the board here are brand-new branches on Northwest Expressway and an East Moore. This is the new appearance of their branches, and this, this would be what the new facility would look like, same materials and, and forms, signage style. So as we began the process of, of studying that development, some interesting things came to light. First of which was three zonings on the property, the second of which was a, a fifty-foot right-of-way which placed the, the sign on the corner outside of the property line, and a platted setback line which ran right through the bank lobby. Setback line that dates from about World War I. So we have an existing non-compliant situation. So this easy, let's take the building down, let's build a, a nice new facility, that scenario became complicated by the encumbrances to the site. So the city staff suggested that this S P U D process was the most advantageous way to deal with the two critical elements, which are the multiple, the I one, O two, and R two zoning, and this setback line, which conflicts with not only existing conditions but what we proposed to do. The other develop-
The, the blue line is the setback line?
The blue line is the setback line.
Okay, thank you.
And the orange is the property line. The other thing that's notable is that Southwest Twenty-Ninth is a four-lane street, and it is crammed in there. The sidewalks, the buildings are pushed forward. It creates a nice, you know, kind of urban edge, but it is, it's using its right-of-way. Chertel has a hundred-foot right-of-way, and it's a, a simple two-lane street. So there is a enormous amount of right-of-way between the curb line and the property line. Just, it's not really apparent when you're out there. It appears to be all, all bank property, but, but as you can see, there's a, a large portion of, of parking area and circulation area that's actually outside of the property line. So fitting the new development onto the site, as I mentioned, require dealing with the setback line to make that, to invalidate that, that old setback line that has not had any effect on the forty-year-old building in place. The second's to deal with the zoning, and the other is to deal with kind of the reduced width of the lot. And one of the primary things that, that we're asking to do with this, with this zoning request is to not provide a landscape buffer on Chertel. And the reason is that we want to take advantage of as much width on the property as we can. And so you see the, the pavement of the parking and circulation area abutting the property line. That creates complications with, with, you know, standard landscape ordinance. And so what we're, what we're suggesting is that by being able to pave up to the property line and not have a landscape buffer there, if we can plant trees in that right-of-way and introduce grass where there's been asphalt, that we create an improved streetscape without doing that planting inside the property line.
Do you need a revocable permit to do that?
I'm, I'm absolutely sure there would be a revocable permit required to, to plant those trees.
That's what I would think.
What, what, what we're suggesting is that we can get some of those street trees outside of the property line, improve the appearance, hopefully, the streetscape. But again, as you can see, we've got a buffer along the alley, we've got limited parking, the bank itself, and a one-way loop out, and so it's just very tight east to west. We were also, we've also requested a, a few parking spaces in that right-of-way, and that's really kind of based on the fact that that right-of-way has been used that way. And you can also see, we're keeping the building forward to try to maintain the, the natural building line of Twenty-Ninth. The suburban solution would be to push the building back and put twenty cars in front, and so we've made an intentional effort to keep that building forward, and we would like to have as many customer-friendly parking spaces as we can near the front of the lot. The only other item that I noticed in the staff recommendations, which is peculiar that we would like to avoid, we don't directly abut any residential. There's an alley or a street between us and any residential, but the entire south half of the lot has R one and R two, you know, abutting in the, in the street or alley center line. And we can certainly screen along the alley. If it's necessary to screen along, on Thirty-Fifth, that can be accomplished. It obviously has not in, in, in the past. But screening along Chertel with a wall or a fence seems counterproductive, particularly since that's one of the, the access points to the drive-through lanes, and driving through a fence or an opening in a wall there doesn't seem to be appropriate for this. We have R two starting here, wrapping to R one, and back up to R two on the alley. So we basically have residential zoning around the-
Because the screen along Chertel, where would be required?
Well, it would be required directly opposite R two, which is basically where we propose to backfeed our drive-through lanes from, from Chertel. We, we have a Chertel and a Twenty-Ninth Street two-way drive. So hopefully that highlights the concerns and the reasons that we brought this, brought this forward, and we certainly welcome your questions and facilitate discussion. One other item that was requested by staff was the elimination of the pole sign. That's a, once that goes away, based on the language of this, this S P U D, that, that can't come back because the, the language that staff has recommended is not just to go to, to base C three signage, it's to eliminate pole-mounted signs altogether. Now, the, the signs that you see, the signs that you see here, these monument signs, that's what the bank intends, and that's what, what they're installing at their new facilities.
What are the, what are the dimensions of that sign, just so we know?
That's, that's about, let's say that's about seven to eight feet tall, and it's probably-
And wider than it is tall?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
But it is not, if you look at the site plan, it's back away from the, the street because of our, you know, tight configuration. We've got visibility, but we're not sticking that out on the sidewalk.
Let me ask you a question. Looking at alignments of your south entrance to your drive-through, and it's offset, what's the curb cut directly to the west, right across the street?
Directly to the west, across-
Am I, or is it the east?
Across Chertel.
Yes, I'm sorry. Is that just a driveway?
That appears to be a, a residential driveway. That's R two zoning.
Okay, thank you. That was what I wanted to know.
My question would be to staff, if we were inclined to permit this, what, first of all, do we have any idea whether there's any plan in the near future to widen Chertel?
I wouldn't have any idea.
What would happen if they decided to widen it five years from now?
They wouldn't have any room with the parking that would be proposed out there. That's, that was our thought on this, is that, you know, we're scraping the site clean. There's a lot of inconsistencies with the code, the way it's developed now. It seems like now would be the time to, to clean those up.
The, the language- Revocable permit would be revoked, and what they'd put in the right-of-way would have to be removed.
The language, our proposed language for the, the S P U D would acknowledge is that anything in the right-of-way could be disturbed or ultimately eliminated by city improvements.
How would that, how would that leave you in terms of the operation of the facility?
Well, to, to be frank, the, the parking that we're, that we're showing, that, that's ideal from the bank's operations perspective, but, but it's not, if that were to go away, the bank could still function. There's more than ample parking on the site to satisfy the requirements within the ordinance, and it doesn't compromise the circulation. So, so that, that particular, if that were to go away, that would not be a, a, a deal killer. As I mentioned, the real, we have to deal with the multiple zoning, and we have to deal with the setback, and we would really like to deal with the, with the landscape buffer on Chertel in order to maximize the, the impervious development of the site to create good circulation.
In terms of your frontage onto Twenty-Ninth Street, it, it looks to me like you're pulling back some. Am I wrong about that? You were saying you wanted to kind of keep your frontage in line with other, are you coming more in line with the I one than on this side than on this side? Is that what you're doing, pulling back a little bit but not too much?
Well, frankly, if, if you're, if you visit the bank now, you drive on the sidewalk and probably park in the right-of-way because there's so little space between the front of the building and the pavement. So what we are proposing is to push the building back only as far as we need to get a five-foot landscape strip in, a one-way parking circulation, angled parking, sidewalk, and some landscaping in front of the building. So it, it will not be exactly, it's obviously, you see this dash line. It's obviously moved back some distance from the existing building. We just did not want this suburban development where the streetscape comes along and then the bank is shoved way back with a parking lot at the front of the building.
In terms of the photograph that you're showing there, can you show me how far back the, the new bank will come?
I can show you on this diagram, this, this bold dash line running through the parking spaces, right here?
Oh, okay.
That's the front of the existing building. So if a parking space is, is twenty feet, it's, it's basically twenty feet back.
Okay.
That's as, that's as far forward as we felt comfortable could be developed. And, and Lee, you may have any, some additional comments to add. I don't know if you have-
Lee, give us your name and address, if you would.
Lee Simcox, seventeen fifteen Pennington Way. We're really excited about redevelopment in the Capitol Hill area. This is a significant investment for us and for, for that area. There are a couple of things that I wanted to point out. First of all, the, this plan was developed with, with a lot of input from the, the local area. We actually solicited input from groups in the area as well as, as our customers that , that use the facility. That clientele is somewhat unique in, in that a lot of it's older in age. And so a couple of things, the, the parking on the, what would be the east side there that would be in the, in the right-of-way is, is relatively important because of the number, unusual number of people that actually drive to this branch and park and are, are elderly and the, and where the, where the front door is. So it's, it's, it's important to us. The other thing is this screening on the Chertel side is very important because of security. To hide the drive-in would, would not be a, a good thing, providing shadows and places for people to, to hide. And plus, we, as you can see, we have a lot of trees back there, and we want us, want the trees to be visible. So like I said, we're, we're very excited about this project and what it will do for the Capitol Hill area, and hopefully we can, we can come to agreement here. Thanks.
Lee, just a couple of comments. One, I compliment you on the design, the way you're laying it out on the site. You've got what is obviously a very specific long-term use in mind. Bank, you don't put bank buildings up and tear them down in five years and put something else in. And you've got a laundry list of C three uses that you want to include, and I, we wouldn't just zone that block that way today if it was presented as a straight zoning request. We wanted to know what you're going to do and how you're going to do it and so forth. I'd like to suggest you take those out. You don't need them. They don't have, they don't benefit the functioning of a bank in any way at all. And if fifty years from now, the bank location moves to some other site, and then this becomes ripe for commercial development, I'd like to see a planning commission at that time have a, a bite at the apple to see what's happened around the area, what fits that now as opposed to in twenty fifteen. Is that a problem for you?
As you mentioned, really, the, the only limitation that creates is, is the potential sale of the property and redevelopment, which the bank doesn't have any immediate plans for.
If you, if you were asking for that today, we wouldn't grant it.
Well, and, and as I recall, our initial submission just described basically C three base zoning and not particular, and I, and I think edits that came back from, from the planning department had incorporated those, those red lines with specific uses. So that was not part of our original language, was to, was to specify, articulate a list of, of allowable uses.
Well, you asked for C three, so they just listed the C three uses-
Right.
-that are in the ordinance without any, without any limitation on them, I guess, until they got to a staff report. I think those wide-open uses are way too much for what could happen fifty years from now without any guidance from the then-planning commission and the then-city council.
There were some, there was a revision to that list that was submitted as a part of the staff recommendation.
I see it, but it's not very much.
Okay. In terms of what we're trying to do with the property, that doesn't materially affect us?
I, oh, I didn't think so. I mean, it's, I'm not hampering at all what you're trying to do. I'm just trying to give a future generation an opportunity to reevaluate the site if it no longer suits a banking purpose. That's my, my point.
So what, what would the zoning level be then at?
It would be an S P U D specifically for the use of, of a bank as you propose it.
I guess the only concern there would be that if we wanted to sell it, we'd at least want to know what else it could be, because, you know, if it's just limited to a bank, that's, that's, that's very limited.
I understand. Aubrey, you help me here?
The use-
What might we, without having wide-open C three as the underlying? Hmm? No, you need to put that away. What I'm suggesting is that we've got all the C three uses listed here. We've got a very specific long-term use.
Yeah, what we might do is just look at paring down the uses that they have there now. We could allow for some office and some light commercial use, but not just restrict-
And as I recall, banks fall within a professional, there's a category that banks fall within that if we could have a few of those categories that would allow-
Maybe a few others might be appropriate.
That would be fine with me as opposed to just having it be wide open and then having the future city fathers have no say about what happens next.
There's no future plan for a Taco Bell.
Why, I'm not-
But I understand-
You might want a Starbucks, but no.
Do we have to continue it in order to do that? Are we going to leave it to the staff to take care of?
Can we do like an O two, J J, and wouldn't that give them some flexibility for future kinds of offices?
That would work. Just pare it down to the, to the O two base regs and, and the O two uses.
And then you'd have something that's marketable, and if somebody came along fifty years from now and wanted to ask for something different, you'd have a marketable piece of property, and it would be open to a potential rezoning.
I don't think we have any objection to that.
Well, if you'll agree to that amendment, I, thank you.
Well, it's hard not to be just giddy about the upgrade that's being made to the property here, but with, with those changes, I think, and if there's not anybody else that wants to speak, I think I'll move approval.
I think it's, I think it's a great project. We have a motion and a second, converting this to an O two request, and with all the changes that you've proposed on the site.
If I could ask one question?
Sure.
One of the staff comments was that a provision should be added to state that the, the original setback was precluded by the S P U D. Absolutely any language that needed to be amended to that in order to, to, to deal with that setback. If we have not covered that in our proposed language, we, we'd certainly like that incorporated.
That could be a T E.
That's why we suggested it. It, it is a T E.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, I guess-
It's covered by a T E.
I guess the other thing that I would want to make clear about, because we alluded to it in your presentation, yeah, the, the pole sign has to go away.
Well, it's going to, they're going to use the sign type that they've got, which is a seven or eight-foot monument sign, which is wider than it is tall.
Mm-hmm. I wasn't sure he was absolutely willing to give it up.
Well, I wanted to be, I wanted to be clear, if, if you take action, you're taking action on the language as submitted with, with the revisions that we discussed to the base zoning and to, to the setback issue if that's required.
Oh, yeah.
The, the base language that we submitted did not require the removal of, of the pole-mounted sign. That's the bank's intention. They want to tear it down, and, but the language of the, of the S P U D did not, that was a staff-recommended alteration.
You may want to walk through these T Es real quick.
Maybe. You want to do that for us?
Hmm?
Do you want to do that for us?
Uh, he's, I believe he's okay.
I believe he's okay with one... The freestanding monument sign? They do propose that.
Correct.
Attached signs, fine. Non-accessory signs prohibited. I think he's okay with. EMD signs... Prohibited EMD signs? Electronic message signs?
I agree.
We'll just delete TE3 if we're going to come back with just O2 uses.
Okay.
The building setbacks reflect what he has on his site plan. And then we just added the language to make sure that the platted setback would not be enforced when you got a building permit.
The one item that I would object to is the provision for no landscape buffer along charter that we would like to strike that landscape buffer and utilize, as I mentioned, the right-of-way.
I think we should say something like that the right-of-way can be used for the landscape buffer, subject to a review and approval of a revocable permit.
Which is what you intend.
You may or may not get the landscaping, but we'll make it eligible.
If we can pave up to the property line, that perfectly satisfies our request.
And what was the decision on the screening along the west adjacent to residential?
We don't need it. It's separated by an alley. Is that not what you're planning?
I think I'm okay without that. Me, it's not any different than what's there now. And I do think the issues of security kind of impact that.
We... The bank proposed screening on the alley. The bank did not propose screening on 30th or charter, which were both recommended by the staff report. This is not an encumbrance, but the charter one certainly is.
We wouldn't recommend screening either of those locations either. So we're fine with that.
Okay.
And then no access to 30th Street with the exception of the alley?
That our site plan aligns with that. The...
Parking in the right-of-way?
Access to the alley. We're not showing long-term access, but we have included language in the S-PUD to allow for temporary bank facility when this is demolished. And we will be utilizing the alley as a secondary means to utilize that facility. So we will... Once the building is complete, we will not be accessing the alley any longer.
That's fine. Parking in the right-of-way?
Again, per revocable permit.
Delete TE8. And the existing pole sign.
It's going to go away. You're not the bank as a warning.
That's our intention.
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve item nine. As condition, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thanks for your patience to walk through this.
Thanks, Lee.
Item number 10 is S-PUD 828 to rezone 17720 Griffin Drive from R3 to S-PUD 828.
Good afternoon again. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here with Jay Johnston of Johnston Builders, who will be the developer. The applicant in this case happens to be Mr. Griffin, who is the original founder of this whole area that was developed as Durbin Hills and the neighborhood to the west. And he is working on a development on the corner, which is on C3. Recently, you saw a case before you just south of the C3 piece that is for congregant care or independent living. And the remainder of that block is zoned R3. The portion that you should see up there that's our portion is recommended or we're asking to be zoned to a specific plan unit development that would be a specific use. It's only going to be personal storage with the retail uses that are limited to just the ability to sell boxes and tape inside the office. We added additional language about regarding truck rental. There will not be any truck rental. There's been some protest letters on this. I don't... Has anybody signed up? Mr. Commissioner? We met with the homeowners on Tuesday night at length. There was about 18 people there. We discussed several things at length and agreed to make several changes to the document. And I have a summary of that that I've sent to the staff. But just to make it on the record, in section 1.2, maximum building height is 35 feet, but that only applies to the frontage on Griffin, which is... This is an example of what they want to do. It's a residential-style frontage. So as you're driving down Griffin, you're not seeing the personal storage boxes. You're being screened by this very nice residential-style entry. That's why that language says 35 feet only applies to the west facade and the residential appearance. Section 1.5, site-proof screening. We probably spent 80% of our time talking about security and screening on the project. The PUD is specific that only the north and east sides can be used... The building can be used as part of the screening. In this particular case, in this layout, you see the north building is being used as a screening, but there would be site-proof screening along the rest of this north and this east side. This area here is a detention pond that's under construction. This is the retail area that I mentioned earlier. The other part of our discussion was with regard to the south fence. Each of these homes have their own stockade fence there in place. There were only a few of the people that lived there represented. And so our concern was getting everybody to agree to let us take down their fence and build a new fence. They felt comfortable that that would be the case. So we wrote into the language that we would build a fence that's eight feet high on galvanized steel post, solid cedar fence with a cap, with brick columns every 40 feet. That would allow for them to get a sense of security and some decorativeness to their backyard. And we think that with that, they'll let us take their fence down. The fence and security along the west frontage will be wrought iron with landscaping. The office would be in this northwest corner, and the drive would be at the north end of the addition. So with the property zoned R3 as it is, we can do as many as 80 units on this tract of apartments. That translates to about 800 trips a day. This complex will be lucky to do 10 to 12 trips a day. They're just low-impact uses. It will be completely secured. We did add in section 1.11, we added the hours of operation of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And then the last item we agreed to add and clarify was the language specifically that the west facade of the facility will have the residential appearance, including pitch druff and brick veneer, which I've already shown you. So with that, the application is recommended for approval by the staff. We agree with TEs number one and three. And my client has agreed to follow the staff's recommendation of an eight-foot monument sign with 100 square feet, which is TE number two. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions? No one has signed up?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 10.
Second.
With the conditions that Tim just read into the record. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Item 11 was continued to July 9. Item 12, C6729, final plat of Turnberry Village, section 2, located west of Sarah Road and south of Northwest 23rd Street.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers, representing the developer. We read the staff report, agree with the TEs, and just request approval of the plat this afternoon.
No one has signed up, Commissioners?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you, Chris.
Item 13, C6731, the final plat of Cobblestone Curve, section 2, located south Memorial and west of Council.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the applicant. We agree with all the technical evaluations of this plat. I did receive a call from Mr. Gales, who requested that we delete TE number three because he did not want to have the variance to the number of lots with a single entrance. But he'd rather have us agree to a temporary access, which we have done. We've submitted this to Mike Wilson, met with him, talked to him yesterday, met with him today. He's in agreement that this is acceptable. Staff is in agreement. This is the old preliminary plat. This entrance here is being moved further south, and that's why it's not in this final plat. So we agree to put this temporary access in until this next phase of the building.
Okay, no one has signed up, Commissioners? We just... We're looking at deleting TE3.
I guess we can amend TE3 to include the temporary access.
Oh, yeah. All right. Amend it to include temporary access, but not requiring variance. Motion?
Move approval, amending TE3 to include temporary access, but eliminating the need for variance.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 13. As condition, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 14 is PV094 to vacate the note on the plat of Glen Eagles Office Park, which is located north of Memorial and east of Western.
Chris Goldsworthy, 10509 Sunnymead Place.
And all you want to do is remove a note from the plat?
Yes. When we originally did the plat, we deemed a portion of it for a storage or maintenance facility, which we decided we really don't need. So what we're wanting to do is just build a small office building on that space.
Okay. No one signed up, Commissioners?
I don't have any questions. Move for approval.
Well, that makes it a second over there. Oh.
I'm sorry.
It's done. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 15, S-PUD 1585 to rezone 13336 North Blackwelder from C3 and O2 to PUD 1585.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates again. Some of you may recall, we did a very lengthy zoning case on PUD 1515, which surrounds the south and the east side of this project, this particular project. As part of that, we had a lot of discussion about the type of apartments and development that would go on in that development. At the time we were doing that, it was the hope of that developer that he could get this piece of property included. That didn't happen, obviously, with the success of Cabela's and Top Golf and several other things that have been announced in that area. The churches decided to sell this property and finally got it under contract. So this is a proposal to allow this to be zoned, basically, under the same guise of 1515. We worked with the staff. They suggested that we use the same restrictions that are in there, which we have done. They want to be... They want to feel like they're part of that development, not part of the church's site. And so the architectural review will all be part of that. So tract one is for a multifamily development that is proposed by Mr. Gary Brooks and not unlike some of the nice things he's done and that he's working on Steel Yard and the Edge in Midtown. This will be similar. It's a very dense development with structured parking that will take up this entire north piece. The south piece, tract two, is for the construction of a maintenance facility that will maintain all the properties that are part of Chisholm Creek. So we put... Worked with the staff on building materials and the landscaping and screening that would be required so that that would virtually be tucked back in here and go away from a visibility standpoint. Those of you that are familiar with the site, Blackwelder drops at this point, rises up and then drops back. This is stuck in the corner. Currently, there's not a plan to connect a public street here. The intent is to... For this development to take its access on Blackwelder up to Memorial Road. There are two TEs. We agree with both of them. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
So we'll see the design and specific plan page?
Yes, sir.
And how many units? And how tall will the building be? And how many parking spaces? Can you just share that with us?
It's approximately 300 units. And the parking spaces are about 1 and 1/2 to 1 ratio. I have not seen a final elevation of the building either. They're working on that now.
Clearly, it's going to be more like the Edge and not a garden apartment.
Exactly.
There was one question I had. It had something to do with communications and... I need to find that. Communication services limited a permitted use. What does that include specifically?
Well, I'd be willing to take that and make sure that's all just in tract two, number one. Number two, we could make it as a special use permit.
But what is it?
My understanding was that the possibility of a communication tower here for the...
A tower?
Not a tower, but like an antenna or... Not like a cell phone tower, but the ability to have transmission.
Because you wouldn't need a fall radius requirement if you had anything?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
So it'd be a very limited possibility of a communications use for the maintenance facility, and it's a very large tract of land.
So it might be a dish or something like that?
Right.
Similar? That answers my question. It's sort of in 1585, but not quite in 1585. Aren't you glad Nick Gales is not here today?
I didn't say that.
No one signed up, Commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item 15 with the language Janice just described. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And it's approved. Mike, are you voting?
Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Do we get a drum roll now for the city's master plan?
Item 16 is the public hearing for the Citywide Comp Plan, Plan OKC, and I'm going to move down to the front and get in the hot seat. Good afternoon, all. This is a long-awaited day. We have done several presentations over the course of time on the comprehensive plan, shared a lot of information along the way. We're going to try to summarize that. And for the benefit of the public, who may be watching on TV, this may be news to them, but I know it's a lot of repetition for you. So appreciate your patience, but I'm sure that you're just enthralled and so excited to be hearing it again. Okay. The comprehensive plan for Plan OKC. Lance, you might have to help me. Thanks. I wanted to start off by saying that cities are enabled to plan and create a comprehensive plan for their community by state statute. We don't have to read this whole thing, but basically, the gist of it is that communities do need to plan for future growth, to protect health, safety, welfare, to promote a balance between interests. This enables us to do the job that we do and to keep our plan updated over time. You'll advance that. For the general public, on what is a comprehensive plan, a lot of times, we get questions when we go out to develop a plan with some confusion about the difference between what a plan dictates and what maybe zoning of an individual property dictates. We like to explain it in that this is a long-range document that guides how our city grows. It has a wide range of topics that it addresses on all different types of things that make up a community. It is a policy document rather than a regulatory one like zoning. And we do not limit the purview of implementing the comprehensive plan to just things the city government can do. The comprehensive plan is a community vision document, and that document describes things that the community needs to band together and work on public-private partnerships and relationships with other types of entities to implement the ideas in the comprehensive plan. This plan will be used by city leaders, though, and developers and business owners and citizens as they make day-to-day decisions about where they live, what they invest in. This plan guides... This plan guides those decisions by policymakers and about how we spend our capital improvements dollars and the decisions that you made here today are guided by the comprehensive plan. And we need to plan. When we went out into the community and we asked what the community's issues were about growth that's going to happen, based on the things that they've observed from living here for many years, we acknowledge we have a changing population with changing needs. We want to protect our economic and fiscal sustainability. We want to create and protect neighborhood health and be able to provide many different choices of how we live, how we get around our city, how we protect our environmental resources, and create a great place with great high quality of life. And this is a challenge, because as we look forward into the future and project out how many people will be moving to Oklahoma City over the next 40 years, it's, it's a staggering number. In 40 years, we can envision four Edmonds and three Normans population adding to Oklahoma City. It's 300,000 people and 170,000 jobs. And when you think about where they're going to go, where they're going to live, where they're going to work, it is a complicated function. So, this is our challenge with the comprehensive plan, and this is what we've been working over the past four years to develop. Our inputs in the planning process balance our, our understanding of the way that the city is formed based on technical information and analyses, surveys, inputs, studies that we've done. We also have to consider public input, people's perceptions about Oklahoma City and what makes it great, and get the citizen feedback to enforce what we know through the technical analyses and studies. Just briefly want to talk about comprehensive. It is a widespread plan covering so many different ranges of things. So, the definition of a comprehensive plan is marked by or showing extensive understanding. So, this does take a long time to put the information together, and I wanted to outline a few of the things that we've done just to get geared up on the plan. If you'll advance the slide. In getting started, it took us several years just to get the basis of information so we could build upon it and know where we were going and be able to talk about quantifiable measures. We took the work from other studies and plans that had been done as a basis of a place to start. We added to that with additional research, data, analyses, and best practices. And we were fortunate enough to get several grants to be able to fund additional studies and consultancies to look at housing market preference and demand for today, looking into the future, what our conditions are for our retail, employment needs, our park system, and be able to project out how we might grow based on past trends, and if we change those trends, what the impacts will be. So, these are the studies and analyses we were able to fund. To the right of the slide, you can see different scenarios that we projected out through modeling software. If you see that the darker colors would be placing those 300,000 people and 170,000 jobs across Oklahoma City. And you can tell by the different patterns of growth on there that we can either grow in a more distributed way or we can grow in a more focused way. The software that we used to look at this growth scenario analysis was able to quantify the impacts that that would have on our population in terms of how people, how far people would have to drive, what types of options they might have, different issues that affect your day-to-day living. We laid this out in a growth scenario analysis and a workshop so people could understand how a comprehensive plan can help guide future development. And the plan is based on the, the majority support of the people who participated towards scenario C, which is a, a more efficient way of growing Oklahoma City in the future. We paired that with surveys throughout the planning process from the beginning all the way through the end, asking people's opinions about things. We know that we have data, we know we have findings, and we know we can project out what future uses are. We also want to understand what people's perceptions are. So, through several different types of surveys and all these topic areas, we were able to reinforce some of the directions that we were heading in the plan and get a lot of good feedback from the public about things that we might not have considered before. We also know that society has changed, the way that we communicate has changed as more fast-paced than ever, people are busy, and the traditional model of going to City Hall to participate in a planning process is no longer a way to get people engaged. So, we ended up, throughout the planning process, having a very highly flexible, very diverse way of reaching out to the community through different types of workshops, meetings, online opportunities. We went to people's meetings to meet while they were already gathering in someplace. So, through all of these different tools, we were able to reach out to as many different groups and populations as we possibly could, so that we got a broad understanding of what our citizenry would like to see this plan accomplish. So, an example of some of our special meetings, we did reach out to special interest groups, like the Chamber of Commerce to talk about business development. We talked with school districts and city managers from other adjacent municipalities. We, the core of our stakeholder groups were comprised of internal and external. We met with city staff from all the different departments in the city, and we had external groups where anybody could sign up and participate to talk about different components of the plan that they were interested in or experts in. We also had a healthy communities oversight group, which was charged with looking at all of the ways that the plan was coming together toward a goal to increase our, our public health through good planning. And last but not least, we had a citizen advisory team, which was a mayoral-appointed team of 27 members that represented each one of the facets of our plan, our planning commission, our city council, builders and developers, and school districts. That team was kind of a final pass at looking at things to provide checks and balances to the system. We did several different interesting types of workshops and meetings. One that I'd like to highlight is a meeting in a box, where we took materials out to neighborhood groups that were already meeting, and they did a self-guided exercise so they could speak freely about their issues and turn them back in in a self-addressed stamped envelope. That was a really fun and exciting exercise for people to engage in, and we were able to get lots of good input from neighborhood residents. Focus groups drilled down into the policies of the plan to make sure that we were considering things that are beyond our technical understanding when it comes to land development on the land. And we had some interesting online tools that we were able to get additional feedback where people could do interactive types of processes to see where their values and where their goals matched up with how they might appropriate funding to do certain things, for example, community appearance or environmental protection. Knowing that we only have so much money to go around to do certain things, this was a balance exercise for them to see the struggle that city planners have in trying to balance everything that creates a community. At the end of this process, we had a ton of information, a ton of good public input on the comprehensive plan, but several major themes kept arising to the top. And there were seven big ideas that came out of the plan that were consistently reinforced through our public engagement efforts. And they were around transportation choice and mobility, making sure that people have ways to get around the city other than an automobile, having an opportunity to have different types of housing choices in different places in Oklahoma City, that we build our urban environment to be healthy and promote health and wellness, to create a beautiful community that's attractive, not only that we are proud of, but that attracts other businesses to Oklahoma City, to make sure that we protect the quality and health of our neighborhoods, and to practice efficient development for in the future, and to preserve our natural character, which we have a very diverse natural character in Oklahoma City from rural wooded areas to lakes and streams to grasslands and prairies. So, I want to briefly go through how the plan is organized. There's three main sections of the comprehensive plan, this is how we use it. The first is the development guide. The second are the elements of the plan that go into recommendations that maybe the community and the city could pair together to achieve, and a policies and implementation section, which brings all of the ideas and strategies and actions in the plan together, assigns timeframes and responsibilities to it. So, first, the development guide outlines a land use plan, which we've been referencing in this meeting today, and a, a guide on infrastructure and investment to the capital improvements program and future investments, private and public investments. I want to talk briefly how we created our land use plan map. It was based on existing conditions in the, on the ground entitlements such as zoning and plating that were already there. We also projected out what we would need in terms of land supply and land area to accommodate what we knew the demands would be for housing and employment and commercial development. We balanced this with public input through those growth scenario workshops that I mentioned, surveys and focus groups. And we were able to pair that with the technical analyses that we did, the studies that we did looking at housing, transportation, environment, and a, a study of how efficient it was for the city to provide services to these areas. The maps on the right show service area efficiency. The top map would be sewer availability, red would be where sewer is not available, and then the ease of availability to tap into the sewer would, would translate to lighter colors toward green. Same concept with the water service availability map. This really tells us what we've already built, reinforcing that we want to grow in places that we can already efficiently serve, and where our city starts to grow over time, where we might be needing to extend services in the future. The land use plan balances concepts of compatibility of land use, the transportation system and its relationship to land use, the intensity of different types of uses in the mix, and the efficiency for us to provide service. So, all of these factors were analyzed for every square mile of Oklahoma City as our land use plan map came together. We have a new terminology now. The former comprehensive plan used development areas as its terminology. We are now calling these typologies. The definition of a typology is putting things into groups according to how they're similar. So, we will now be referring to our land use designation areas as land use typology areas. And the system that we have for classifying this has two parts. Our city really is comprised of basically these four different types of typologies: open space, rural areas, urban areas, and downtown. Within rural and urban areas, there are different intensities within them. So, we have broken those out so that you have a gradient of different types of typologies within them that are defined in the comprehensive plan. The next section of typology areas is what you might consider a layer over those base typology areas. This is where parts of our city start to concentrate specific types of use, such as a regional commercial district or an urban commercial district, or an employment district. This really helps us focus what types of clusters of development are appropriate in different places in Oklahoma City. We have also initiated a new type of typology standard to preserve land for future development, to hold land in an urban reserve, so to speak. This is land that we don't currently provide full services to, but that we expect will be urbanized as the city grows. This is called the urban reserve. This is land that as we reevaluate the comprehensive plan year after year, time after time, we can evaluate whether or not we need to release that urban reserve land for future growth and development. Additionally, we have a lot of agricultural land within our city limits that are preserved in very, very large tracts, and we have initiated a, a new type of typology called agricultural preserve to maintain and keep that land in the largest possible tract, so that as the city grows in the future, that eventually will become easier to urbanize. This is what that all looks together when it is laid across Oklahoma City on a map. You can see that it has a lot of specificity. The hatched areas are the layers, which I explained before, and the solid colors are the base. So, an applicant that might want to develop in any given area might be subject to two different sections of the plan that would apply to them to guide what type of development uses are appropriate, intensities of, of those uses, and additional standards that are outlined in the comprehensive plan. And we know that these are all pictures showing all the different types of land uses that we have in Oklahoma City and would like to promote in Oklahoma City. Those land use areas could combine the majority of these within that one land use area. Where we get into issues like we've discussed today is how those lay out next to each other, making sure that we are creating compatibility between neighbors. And you all deal every single day with these compatibility issues. We have made an attempt in the comprehensive plan to define what compatible uses are and help provide a guide to people before they come to you on mitigating some things that might be considered incompatible between uses in those areas. So, we have a compatibility system. This, and compatibility, for, for those of you who don't understand this term, which I'm sure you all do, is when two things are able to coexist together without problems or conflict. And how we might address that is through a three-pass approach. The first is that land use typology area. In the description of that land use typology area, it, it describes the character of what mixes of uses are appropriate. It sets minimum and maximum typical densities that are achievable within that area, sometimes a floor-to-area ratio. A lot of planners and architects and developers use this term floor-to-area ratio in denser parts of the city. And appropriate and inappropriate uses. The first pass is do you meet that test? The second pass is, if you have different types of uses next door to each other, do you have any incompatible operations or traffic impacts or scale, building scale anomalies between those two developments? Sometimes you can have residential against residential, but you might have a five-story multifamily residential against a single-story, single-family residential. And those might trigger some incompatibility triggers, such as building scale, that could be mitigated through site design and architectural planning and design types of details. So, the third pass is, if you can make it more compatible through design and proper site planning, this may be a consideration that you have a compatible use. If not, it's clearly an incompatible use. We've tried to outline where those triggers might be between different development types in a table, to know if you do have building scale, traffic, or operational impacts between different types of use. If we go to the next slide, oh, that was it for that slide. We've given them tools in the comprehensive plan to try to explain when and where incompatibility might be a concern, so they can dig into those sections and get examples of how they can mitigate against those uses. The next section looks at infrastructure. We've tried to outline characteristics of different types of streets across Oklahoma City. And a lot of times when you think about street typologies, you would think about the arterial network system. An arterial street that runs east and west across the length of Oklahoma City actually changes character, if you, if you think about that, from the rural areas through the downtown. This is not really what we're talking about with street typologies. That character of the street is really defined by how the street functions and the land uses around it. So, through Oklahoma City, we're redefining what we mean by those types of streets, connectors, main streets, and industrial streets. The next slide shows an example of what one might look like. These are also based on where they are. So, in our urban, low-intensity area of Oklahoma City, this might be an example of how we would hope that a major arterial street might be established or formed. This is really a good guide for either developers who are looking at modifying sections of streetscape adjacent to their property, or for the city and planning for and designing future street widenings or new streets. We've also tried to outline considerations for managing vehicular access into sites. We know a lot of times, in different places around town, as development comes in, we, we get multiple curb cuts and driveways, and over time, as those accumulate along a corridor, it creates traffic backups and, and inconvenient obstacles for people to try to navigate within the system. So, we've highlighted some major corridors where we would like to concentrate the access into those sites in one place to get circulation to move in a more efficient way. We've also highlighted places in Oklahoma City where we can focus in on different strategies for enhancing retail. This is backed on the retail study that was performed. There are three different categories of what we could do to either revision existing retail areas, revitalize others, or reaffirm that they're doing well and they might just need to make some major changes, minor changes. And as far as our capital improvements, we want a Plan OKC to be a guide for making decisions about how and where and when we spend money to make improvements. This is a, a series of considerations on need for water, sewers, street improvements, fire, parks, sidewalks, and trails, layering on a whole bunch of other factors, so that you can look at areas of the highest need and where you might get more bang for your buck. So, we hope that this is going to be a very informative tool in the next general obligation bond cycle. The middle section of the plan, which is the bulk of the plan, is based on different types of elements. And if you'll go to the next slide, I'll explain what those are. We've broken the plan up into these categories or elements: a land use element, transportation, environmental, neighborhoods, community appearance, parks, economic development, and public services. Each one of these is a chapter, and each of those chapters has kind of a, a basic description of what's in them. of what's in them. For the land use plan, the goal is that we manage development to ensure efficiency. There are several recommendations within each one of these chapters, and these slides just highlights a few of those recommendations. One strategy for future land use is to encourage infill mixed use and redevelopment. That only benefits the way the city grows if we can utilize the areas that we already 100% serve. Connect OKC is the transportation element. We would like to establish street connectivity standards, that's one recommendation in the plan, to look at regional transportation, to create a bike and pedestrian plan that has actually already started in process, and to design street typology guidelines that can then be used in making future street improvements. The environmental element is recommending to establish an urban forestry program and different types of measures to improve air and water quality over time. As we build and as we develop and as we travel around in our vehicles, it takes a long time to see changes in that, but we know that incrementally we can impact air quality. Live OKC is the communities element, incorporating safety into design, expanding the different types of housing and diversity of housing within our community, revitalizing urban neighborhoods, and enhancing subdivision design. Enrich is the culture element. We're working to create a historic preservation plan. We have funding from the State Historic Preservation Office to begin doing efforts for that, to improve different types of landscaping and urban design standards through our city to enhance its appearance, and to work on our cultural heritage and public art plan. Play is the parks and recreation element. This was also subsidized by a study, a community foundation in the Oklahoma, and the city of Oklahoma City paired together to do this study. It analyzes the level of park service that we provide across the community and anticipates future need as our city grows for park service. Strengthen OKC is our economic development chapter. It gives several recommendations about how we might facilitate commercial and industrial development, invest in placemaking, and boost educational achievement. And Serve OKC is the public services element. This element is really focused on creating a safe city, maximizing resilience from emergencies, using our city facilities to help direct growth, and create supportive learning environments. This is an example of what one of the chapters looks like, with Live OKC, the communities chapter, and how it's laid out, in that each one of these elements has goals that were created by our community of where we would like to be and categorized by these different types of endeavors. Each one of these goals then has a list of initiatives. The next slide goes into how the initiatives are laid out to achieve those goals, and this chart shows which goals it might be able to influence working toward. Then within each element, under the initiative are several recommendations or actions that could be done. And then, those are rolled into our policies and implementation framework. This is what the framework looks like. Every recommendation, action, recommend, policy in the plan is then contained in this table in the back. It references the policy number, explains the policy, and if you'll click one more time, ties it back to all of the goals. And it's not just the goal that's articulated in that chapter, but these are goals woven through the comp plan. Any one of these individual actions may touch five, six, seven different goals that it's such a complicated and interwoven type of thing. Also ties back to many different initiatives. It shows areas of overlap or reinforcement. It describes the type of action that we would need to take and who would be responsible primarily for implementing it or working in partnership with other groups to implement that. We've also tried to prioritize when we would start working on these things by a start-by-date. So this is the nutshell version of Plan OKC. It has a ton of great information and detail in it, and we would encourage the public to use our website, which is a fabulous tool to really get to what you want to know quickly. It's available at www.planokc.org. The original website, when we built the plan, is still active. Once the plan is adopted, the new website will be in effect. So you can click on each one of the elements if you want to learn more about environmental policies. You can go to the development guide chapter. You can click on an area of Oklahoma City that you want to know what applies to me if I want to develop here and get policy recommendations out of it. It's got a lot of great functionality. You can also download and look at the printed version of the document, which is, looks like this, at planokc.org docs, slash Plan OKC. And the next. I just wanted to say too that this has been a long process. It's been a long road. So many people have been involved. So many people need to be thanked, and I quickly want to do that. So if you'll advance. We could not have done this plan without the funding that we received from different entities to do all of those studies. It was over $800,000 worth of plans and studies that backed it, and all the different consultants that helped us on the plan. Had to say that. Next slide. This is our wonderful planning commission, mayor, and council, who've been involved in the planning process, and who've been giving us nuggets of wisdom of things that we needed to really focus on as we built this new plan along the way. Also, our stakeholder and community groups that have been engaged throughout a four-year process and stuck in there all the way, our citizen advisory team, those 27 people, many of you participated in that, and our city staff. We've got existing staff, former staff, and staff all over Oklahoma City throughout the departments. And I really want to give big props to this row right here that have slaved over this plan night and day, lived and breathed it. So Ian Colgan, who came on maybe three-quarters of the way through the planning process, really got in on the fun stuff when he came. He produced a whole bunch after he got here. We owe a lot to Ian for that. And we have Randy Entz, who really led the transportation section of the plan, but he also got involved in parks and recreation and probably pulled them in on some environmental and land use. Philip Walters. Philip has been instrumental in doing the growth scenarios analysis. He is an amazing technical resource at the planning department. He does a lot of the demographics analysis, number crunching, and he's pretty much the go-to guy for anything that anybody needed that was technical.
Say your name.
Jared. Jared Martin. I'm so sorry, Jared, blanking out. Jared also came along probably three-quarters of the way through the planning process, and he was able to take on the environmental element and the parks element. And those were challenging elements to do, so we really appreciate Jared's help with that. And Ken Bryan, who worked on the Serve OKC elements and the communities element of the comp plan. And he has been kind of our overarching coordinator of all of our different outreach processes. He's been helping to just kind of keep things moving for a long time. We're also missing Jeff Butler, who's on vacation. I'm sure he's sad about that. But Jeff is our land use and economic development guy, and he is going to be working with the division manager, Dennis Blind, on the implementation of the comprehensive plan, helping to pull projects together and coordinate staff and community partners. I'm sure I forgot people. Sarah Welch is with Development Services Department, coming back to the planning department. And I'm saying this officially on TV that Sarah's coming back. But she participated in the front end of the plan. So I really want to thank this wonderful, amazing, talented team of people, and I want to thank all of you guys for helping advise us as we've gone through it and give us these wonderful, encouraging pats on the back as we needed them when we were starting to really fade. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, before we shower ourselves with confetti from light fixtures, there's a gentleman named Mark Hader who has some questions that you'd like to come forward. And if you give us your name and address, please.
Mark Hader, M-A-R-C-H-A-D-E-R. I'm actually the new county commissioner for Northern Canadian County.
Welcome.
You know, you guys may know more than others that the largest city in Canadian County is Oklahoma City. We've got about 45,000 residents, so that's about 7% to 8% of your population as a city as a whole. I live in Surrey Hills, so I'm a part of the community here. So anyway, first of all, I want to say kudos. It's been a long process, and I know, I can only imagine all the efforts that's gone into the whole process. But I was here for one of the planning things, oh, maybe several months ago, and I don't want to seem like a downer, but I do want to come kind of representing my constituents over there in Canadian County. You know, we are a part of Oklahoma City, but as you guys may realize, at least Ward One, Ward Eight that shares some of our area, sometimes they feel like a stepchild, I believe. And so when I came to one of the previous planning entities, you know, I went around all the different, you know, areas of focus. I said, well, what can I take back to my constituents and tell them, you know, in the next 35 years, by 2050, that we're going to try and be doing to serve those citizens or enhance things there? And virtually everyone said, well, nothing really, other than we're trying to preserve your rural lifestyle. Folks that live out in that area would probably just as soon be on out in Incorporated Area or be de-annexed if that's all they're going to get, so to speak. So anyway, I guess, you know, I was listening to some of the things in here. So I guess we're part of the agricultural preserve, at least from the diagram I saw. So again, that sends kind of a message that, you know, we're just kind of holding you captive. So I guess, and I realize these aren't necessarily decisions for you guys to make, but I know this is going to probably be passed for you guys on to the city council. I'll probably speak them for them too. And again, I'm not trying to be an detractor, but I do know my citizens out there. I knocked on thousands of doors in trying to get elected, and it was a very common thing that people were frustrated. We probably get a majority of our calls about road and bridge maintenance concerns. They're from Oklahoma City, a little bit from the other Piedmont, Yukon, Mustang, El Reno, et cetera, that aren't our responsibility, and we have to kind of try and direct them back to you guys. We try to work with you, and we want to be a good partner, actually, in what we can do about infrastructure. So anyway, I guess I just, do you guys have any words of wisdom or advice that I can take back and paint a better picture or say that we've got plans for serving the Canadian County citizens that you have?
Well, I think one would be to have your citizens engage in the political process and obviously have close contact with the city council representatives that cover your areas, as you say, Wards One and Eight, for example, but it may
Sure.
wind up on others. I know it helps to communicate with all of the council members when you've got issues. Not, I mean, you obviously want to speak to your own, but
Sure.
I have found over the years that you get a lot more done if you just quietly talk to the entire council
Sure.
on particular issues that are of concern. Some of the things that are problematic for you relate to your distance from the center of town and the city's ability to deliver certain kinds of services like water, sewer, and so forth feasibly
Sure.
to the extremes of a 624-square-mile city.
Absolutely.
So, which also causes a four- or five-year process to develop a master plan for a city whose land uses are as diverse as these are. So, I mean, kudos to the staff for the work that they have done because it's a very complex task to pull all this together.
I do agree with you that citizens ought to be more proactive about being engaged on every front. I would, on the, I like the variety of ways that you tried to engage the public. My wife and I, we're pretty engaged people, and we didn't really hear much about this until towards the very end. I mean, sure, there's public comment, but, you know, we used to live in the Putnam North area in Warwick Estates, a nice community that's always been very, you know, I'm not saying you went to every homeowners association, but, you know, we have regular meetings. We would have been a very easy group to, you know, saw it, and we would have been very engaged, you know, if you'd come. So anyway, and I'm not trying to detract because you've done a lot. I just, I'd be curious on the data, the input you got, you know, if you put on a map all the different points you took that from, where would that represent? How well did our area get engaged? So, anyway, but I'll take that back with me, and like I said, I'll probably go speak at a city council meeting. Again, not to be negative, I guess I would be curious if there's any, I know that, you know, the city of Mustang and the city of Oklahoma City are working on maybe de-annexing a little bit on Highway Four going south. You know, that seems like a good thing because I'm sure Mustang would like to serve that community. You know, I'd be open, I'd be curious if there's more interest in that for adjoining communities, whether it's Piedmont or Yukon or Mustang. I understand, I think it was wise on Oklahoma City's part, certainly on their plans for water, and to annex out in a lot of areas so you don't get cut off like, say, Detroit, you know, where you get surrounded by suburbs and they grow and you're kind of stuck. But anyway, is there any interest in Oklahoma City? You said
I think the answer is clearly yes because we've reached out to, what, 24 school districts within the city. We are in part of, I think, five counties
Six, I think.
in the different directions we go out.
Sure.
And there's a real interest in working collaboratively, and we certainly here on the horseshoe feel we represent all of the citizens of Oklahoma City. I don't have any notion of where the county lines are that we cross over. So when we look at a case in southwest out toward Mustang, for example, I don't stop and think, oh, well, wait a minute. Where's Oklahoma County? And where does Canadian County begin? For example. That's never on our minds at all. So know that, if that's any help.
Do you have anything on that?
I'd also like to tell you that as a former resident of Surrey Hills and a daughter of a current resident of Surrey Hills, that area is often on my mind.
Yes.
I think, I think most of us here don't find any distinction between the neighborhoods and residents of that area as compared to, you know, any other part of Oklahoma City.
Yeah, yeah.
You had asked if, what the designation was for the land in the county.
I was noticing that the western, so maybe the shaded for the agricultural preserve, which, again, kind of sends a message that we're, just for hyperbole, we're holding you captive till someday down the road if we decide we want to do something with you, you know. That's probably kind of the feeling I think our citizens would get.
Yes. The area, I think, that's within the county has a range of different types of designations from urban
Right.
to rural, to open space, to, I think there's some industrial in there, and then the agricultural preserve. That agricultural preserve land is the farthest out to be able to provide services to. So it's really within the next, you know, decades that we would be able to grow our city to the point that we could urbanize those areas. So the plan is made to where we can accommodate growth as it happens, and the plan will be updated on a regular basis as development comes in. Any developer can come with a proposal if they want to request an amendment to the plan and make an argument that it's time to amend the plan. We will hear those requests.
I do know that we're the fastest-growing county in Oklahoma for the last several years, and at least since about a year ago, we're the fastest-growing county in America, at least for a snapshot in time. So I think we're going to be a big part of that 300,000 people, you think, are going to be a part of this community. So anyway, I don't want to belabor it. You guys are, again, you've done a good job on this. And I've got business cards. I'd like, if you guys want to pass around, again, we want to be a partner on certainly what we can do to help on infrastructure with the city of Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
I guess I would, I would say, you know, not to belabor the point, I think most of us would view our role with respect to areas out there, not to hold them captive, but rather to prevent development from encroaching upon them beyond the city's ability to serve that development. I mean, I think the worst-case scenario is for development to sort of run rampant beyond the services that are provided. So I think that's the balance we try to maintain.
I do know the folks that live in the various, everybody knows, anybody that lives within a school district, there's a lot of, you know, commonality or community within that. And so areas like Mustang, which probably a majority of Mustang residents don't live in Mustang, I mean, Mustang School District, you know, don't live there. Same thing with Yukon, some of it with Piedmont. Those communities, the people, the schools they're associated with is oftentimes the thing, they feel like they're a part of that community. And so if they do happen to live, like I do, in that Oklahoma City, but Yukon School District, those people, in some ways, they feel like they're part of Surrey Hills and Piedmont. Piedmont, Surrey Hills Gazette, you know, there's a tie of that community historically. And also, it's, there's a Surrey Hills Elementary that's part of Yukon School District, and so some people feel like they're kind of a part of Yukon. And again, I understand keeping the major corridors for commerce and sales tax down the road, but I just think some of those areas would say, if you're, if you're not going to come out and help us develop, and I understand the challenges of the size and scope, so I'm not being critical of that, but if that's the case, then are those ways? And the thing you do with Mustang, I hope that comes to fruition, and if there might be ways. And I know also with Yukon, allowing to, you know, take some land to make parks and recreation area, you know, southwest kind of their jurisdiction is nice. It helps them accomplish something without them having to take up some of their maybe commercially developed land. So anyway.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time, guys.
Thanks for coming out. Staying with us. On behalf of the planning commissioners, I would do want to thank the staff and all the parties that were involved in developing this plan. It has been a long time coming. I remember when we started. I don't think I had as much gray hair, I have a lot more now. But you folks have done yeoman work, and because it's 4/20, I don't want to shut all of you off for complimenting the staff, but I think we need to move along and take a motion to adopt the master plan.
I'll be proud to move for the option of the Oklahoma City plan and admonish our commissioners that it's probably the most important vote you've made since you've been on this commission. on this commission.
Okay, we have a motion and second to adopt the plan. Cast your votes, and the website will be live at 6:00 a.m., right? Okay. Yeah, nice job. You got, you have done well. Thank you.
And now, we get to elect officers.
Bob? Are you awake?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the certain provisions of the bylaws relating to the term of office of the officers, and in part of that motion, after we moved to waive it, is to move for the election of, reelection of John Yocul as chairman and Mike Kinsley as vice chairman of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission.
Second motion. Any discussion? All right, cast your votes. That's done.
The remaining items were continued.
Planning Commission staff? Anything?
Nobody.
Development services? Municipal counselor? Commissioners? Motion to adjourn? We're done? We're done.